Sherry, we ready?
We're ready.
We're ready, Mayor.
Okay, welcome everyone to the January 5th, 2021 City Commission meeting. Happy New Year, happy to be back. And before we get going, we'll have Porter O'Neil, our Communications and Creative Resource Director, give us a few instructions.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. As the Mayor said, my name is Porter O'Neil and I'll be facilitating the Zoom video portion of the meeting tonight. I'm here with Sherry Redeman, City Clerk, and she'll work alongside Mayor Finkeldie to help facilitate the meeting tonight. This meeting is being broadcast and recorded on the city's YouTube channel, as well as Channel 25. During the meeting, when you are not participating, please mute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon found on the lower left-hand side of the Zoom menu next to the video icon. Muting your microphone during the meeting will make it easier for everyone to hear. You will be able to unmute if and when you want to speak. In some cases, I may mute or unmute people as needed to minimize distractions during the meeting. Please remember to state your name every time you speak for the benefit of those listening remotely. You can turn your video camera on or off by clicking the video icon in the menu. For the purposes of this public meeting, when you are participating in the meeting, please keep your video on. When you are not participating in the meeting, it is okay to turn your video off. You will still be able to listen to the meeting when your video is off. You will just have to remember to turn your video back on when you're participating. Turning your video off when you are not participating will help make sure that the active meeting participants can be seen on the screen. In some cases, I may turn someone's video off if they are not actively participating to minimize distraction during the meeting. You can always turn your video back on during the meeting. If you have any trouble, you can send me a chat. If you're participating by phone, you can click star six to unmute your phone and you can click star nine if you want to raise your hand to provide public comment. For those using Zoom, somewhere on your screen, you will see a choice to toggle between Speaker and Gallery View. Speaker View shows the active speaker. Gallery View tiles all of the meeting participants at the same time. And now I'll turn the meeting back over to Mayor Finkeldie.
Mayor Finkeldie, thank you very much, Porter. I will go ahead and take roll call. I know that Commissioner Bowley is unable to be with us tonight, but Vice Mayor Shipley.
Here.
Commissioner Ananda.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Mayor Finkeldie, here. And before we go into the agenda, I'll have our City Clerk, Sherry Redeman, give us a few reminders.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to provide a few procedural reminders for the virtual meeting. Commissioners, you must state your name and title each time you speak. All motions will need to be stated clearly. After a motion is made and seconded, the Mayor will call on commissioners individually to provide their vote. Mayor, you will then need to announce whether the motion carried and the count of the vote. Various members of city staff are present via Zoom, and they must also remember to state their name and title each time they speak. When public comment is sought on an item, individuals participating via Zoom should use the Raise Your Hand feature. Windows and Mac users can access this feature through the Participants button at the bottom of their screen. Android and iPhone users can access this feature through the More button located at the bottom right corner of their screen. For those calling in by phone, you may dial star nine. And if all else fails, you can always just raise your hand physically and we'll make sure that we scroll through the images and not miss anyone. Individuals will be called upon by name in the order they appear on the meeting host screen. When you are called on, please unmute your listening device and state your name before speaking. The Mayor will then call for in-person public comment for those without access to technology options. Staff present will direct you to the podium to speak, following social distancing and safety protocols. The regular three-minute time limit will apply. Thank you.
Mayor Finkeldie, thank you, Sherry. Now move on to the agenda. The first action item is to approve the agenda. The City Commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder the agenda during the meeting. Does any Commissioner wish to amend the meeting?
B eight E and B eight F.
Commissioner Larson, I second.
Mayor Finkeldie, we have a motion by Commissioner Ananda, a second by Commissioner Lawson. Commissioner Ananda?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Aye.
Mayor Finkeldie, aye, passes four to zero. We will start with eight, seven, A. Go ahead, Vice Mayor Shipley.
Um, uh, Mayor, can you hold on a second? I think I'm getting messages that we've lost audio on YouTube. I don't know, if Kirk can check that.
We're checking that now, thank you, yeah, there's some issue. We got it, thank you.
Vice Mayor Shipley, thanks, Mayor. Um, yeah, I had, I just had, um, kind of a question for Jeremy. Um, uh, I noticed that a number, and you remark in, I'm sorry, Jer, um, a number of items here have not been discussed before or have not been approved. Um, I presume that, that there are reasons for that. I wondered if you could just talk about that for a second, one of these items I hadn't even heard of before.
Jeremy Wilmett, Finance Director, sure. When the city decides to issue debt for projects, it's a multifaceted process. So the first step of that process is the Capital Improvement Plan, uh, that, um, process that occurred this summer in conjunction with the budget. Based on that, all the projects that are identified for potential debt financing have to, by, um, by federal and state statute, um, be awarded to be debt financed before any cost within that project can even begin. In other words, if we had a cost, say, of advertising of a debt project, but we hadn't yet awarded the, or notified the public that, uh, public debt could be used for this project, those expenses would be excluded. So to prevent that from occurring, the first step that we do is this authorizing resolution to essentially, to essentially let the public know, these are the projects that we believe, excuse me, that we believe we will issue debt for, uh, in the com, in the coming years. This does not actually issue that debt, nor obligate the city to issue that debt. It's really just a public notice, uh, because there's statutory language in both state law and federal law that allows the public to object if they so choose to public debt being used for those projects. So step two, if you will, of the process is to notify the public that these are the projects we've identified as potentially being debt financed. Step three then will be staff bringing these projects back to you for your consideration. Um, and if you so choose approval, at which time then, another list will be gathered together of the actual projects that are going to be debt financed, uh, and we'll look for that to happen probably in March.
Vice Mayor Shipley, thank you very much. I, I just think, um, that may not be obvious to members of the public, and it's nuanced, and some of these things, like I said, are maybe things some, even some of us haven't seen before, so I just thought it might be nice for people to understand that a little bit better. Thank you, Jeremy.
Mayor Finkeldie, do any Commissioners have any questions? If any member of the public would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand via the, um, Raise Your Hand function. And I guess unless you tell me otherwise, Sherry, I'll assume no one's present and I'll stop asking for in-person, but let me know if someone shows up. But if anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand.
This is Sherry Redeman, City Clerk, and no one has indicated they want to speak to this item.
Mayor Finkeldie, thank you, Sherry. Do we have any motion on this item?
Commissioner Larson, I move to adopt Resolution Number 7351.
Mr. Ananda, second.
Mayor Finkeldie, we have a motion by Commissioner Lawson, a second by Commissioner Ananda. Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ananda?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Aye.
Mayor Finkeldie, aye, passes four to zero. Thank you very much. I do think that was a helpful thing to get out there to the public. Most people probably would not get that unless they were following along closely. Um, we now move to item B eight E. Again, Vice Mayor Shipley.
Uh, Vice Mayor Shipley, um, I, I do want to thank Jessica and the team. I know that she and they did a lot of work on the data. Um, I watched the, uh, multi-modal transportation meeting and it was, um, a really, uh, great presentation. Um, I know this is on consent, but it is something we've talked about for a long time. I don't know if she would like to maybe show us a couple of her maps. It really is quite impressive, um, what they've done. Um, as usual, I will have my usual comments about sidewalks, but if Jessica would like, um, to say anything about, um, or just maybe show us just very quickly, I hate to put her through her paces, but, um, it really is quite impressive.
Hi, Vice Mayor Shipley, this is Jake Baldwin, Senior Project Engineer with MSO. Um, we, Jessica and I kind of coordinated earlier, so I can give a simplified version of what this process is, and I know she'd be happy to step in and answer any questions that anybody has of a technical nature. And so I'll, I'll just share screens here briefly. Okay, um, so what the data-driven process is, very simplified manner, is we begin by looking at, um, the origins and the destinations in town and the preferred sidewalk routes between those. So we're gonna, this model takes each origin, which is going to be a residence, and it's going to identify the preferred routes to all the destinations within a mile radius of that residence. It's gonna identify a, um, a, a web of routes, so to speak. Then this model is going to combine all the routes from all the destinations into the, into the combined map, um, which is unweighted at that point. It's just a simple composite prioritization model. Um, so we've got kind of that first layer, then on top of that, we put our weighting or prioritization, and the first component of that is going to be, um, the destination and proximity of that destination. So following, um, the, the guidance of the non-motorized prioritization policy, uh, we weight schools over retail, for example, and if a school's within an eighth of a mile, that's gonna weigh more heavily than a school than, um, a half of a mile. So, uh, the, the type of destination and the proximity of that destination is the first piece of the weighting on top of those preferred alignments. And then the second piece of that weighting is gonna be for, uh, the, the disadvantaged, the transportation disadvantaged population, which takes into consideration our CDVG blocks, uh, residents under eighteen and over sixty-five, uh, those without a high school education, single-parent households, those without a vehicle, um, not sure I named all those off or not, but the, those are all included. So that is the, the second piece of the weighting. And then once those are all pieced together, the, the model is run and produces, and what you're seeing on the screen here, which is the program prioritization model. So in this map that we're looking at, you'll see, um, the, the routes colored red are gonna be the higher priority routes, and those colored green are gonna be the least. Um, also in this Exhibit A, you'll see, um, the, the Phase One and Phase Two areas that are shown, um, kind of highlighted black there, and as well as point out the blue here towards downtown, that's gonna, the, demonstrate our brick sidewalks that, um, we currently have in our JS models, and I'll touch on that briefly when we, um, scroll down to the second exhibit. So Exhibit A, the model is essentially gonna produce those prioritized routes from which we're gonna choose our inspection routes for the 2021 project. And that is what you see here in purple. Um, again, we've got, um, blacked-out areas for Phase One and Phase Two of the program, as well as we're, we're showing our brick sidewalks. Um, our brick sidewalks will be excluded from this year's program. Um, as you're aware, there's a community stakeholder group currently working on brick standards and specifications. So we wanna make sure that their work is completed before the repairs on brick sidewalks, otherwise we can't, um, really do an equitable repair to brick sidewalks across town. We wanna make sure everybody doing the same thing. So we'll, we'll take those out until their work is done. And that leaves us with a, um, approximate, um, route map of what you're seeing in purple. Now that's not to say that this can't change one way or another, uh, because as you're all aware, um, there's a lot of unknowns in this program. So on these purple routes, we really don't know the condition of the sidewalk yet, so we don't know the quantity of repairs it's going to take. So in all reality, with this project, the first step in our process is going to be inspect these sidewalks to determine how many square feet of repairs we need to do. From that, we can put a, a price to determine what we think is an estimate of what the work is gonna cost us. Um, so at that point, we can compare our estimate of what the project's gonna cost to what we have budgeted, and with those two numbers in mind, we'll know if we need to reduce our scope or increase our scope to, to maximize those funds. So i- in a nutshell, that is the data-driven process and the output of that process. Um, and I'd be happy to take any questions you might have at this point, I know that was a, a lot of information.
Vice Mayor Shipley, thank you. I, I do wanna follow up just with one thing. Um, I seem to recall that you, uh, that we, uh, did do LiDAR on this, but do we just not have the data back? Is that the situation?
Um, we do have LiDAR data, but I don't believe it's been processed yet, so we don't have that information on sidewalk condition yet. I would anticipate that being available for next year's program.
Hi, um, Jake, this is Amber Schultz, General Manager of RITMA. So we actually just got the pilot for the condition data, actually this afternoon, so we'll be taking a look at that.
And Vice Mayor Shipley, um, again, this is Jake Baldwin, Senior Project Engineer. What that LiDAR will, will allow us to do is have a better idea of what that condition of the sidewalks is, and so when we, essentially when we, um, put forth, um, an area to inspect, we'll have more confidence and accuracy of, of what the size of that is, meaning our increase or decrease of scope compared to what we have budgeted should be a lot less.
Vice Mayor Shipley, let me, let me just make sure I completely understand you both. Um, we've started on the LiDAR process, you've captured everything, you're just waiting on the data, and you've gotten something today about that, but this purple area that you've identified won't be inspected that way, it will be inspected the way that you've done it with the first two sections.
Jake Baldwin, Senior Project Engineer, yes, that's, that is correct. Um, I am, I, I really see us needing to have in-person inspections probably throughout the life of this program. Um, I'm, I'm not sure yet, uh, until we see the data, to know how accurate that LiDAR is in terms of telling us where repairs need to be made from panel to panel.
Um, Vice Mayor Shipley, was there something else you wanted to say about the brick, or, or did Jessica, did somebody else want to talk about that?
Uh, no, the Jake Baldwin, Senior Project Engineer, but my whole point in, in, in kind of pointing out the blue brick was that we wouldn't be able to do it as part of this year's program, um, because we wanna wait till we have those decisions made by the stakeholder group.
Um, Vice Mayor Shipley, is there anything else, anybody else, um, from staff wants to mention about this before I ask a bunch of weird questions?
Mayor Finkeldie, go ahead, it's, it's time for Commissioners to ask questions, so.
I'm not sure it's a question exactly, again, I, sorry, Vice Mayor Shipley, the, this is really incredible, unless I'm mistaken, I think it's what some Commissioners, one Commissioner particularly has asked for, for a long time. Um, and, uh, it's really great that this is, um, a way that we're moving and that you guys, but I understand a number of hours of time into it. Um, if I had any concern, it would be about the brick area, 'cause I'm, if I understand your maps, that is a low-to-modern-income area, and so we would be skipping that for another year. Um, and so then a question could be, why the rush, um, which may go back to the beginning of our conversation about sidewalks in general and, and the number of sections we're doing them in. Um, I noticed in your memo, if I understand right, you were kind of, um, dividing out an, an estimate of how many miles per year we would have to do. Um, I, my question about that was, I think you used ten years, was that ten years including the two areas we already did, or ten years starting right now?
Uh, Jake Baldwin, Senior Project Engineer, from what I understand, that was ten years starting now excluding the first two years. But again, that was, that was essentially arbitrary to help us do the prioritization.
Vice Mayor Shipley, so, um, I think in the beginning, there were eleven sections, and, um, this last year, we, uh, cut the first, the second section in half, so that would've put us at thirteen, is that about right?
Jake, this is Jessica Martin, Transportation Planning Manager, and I'm gonna interject. It, it's my understanding we divided the entire city by ten sections, and that included the sections we've already done. So if we take out the two sections we've done, what leaves us with is eight more years of just under forty miles of linear sidewalk foot a year.
Um, okay, thank you.
Mayor Finkeldie, other questions from Commissioners before opening up to public comment? Seeing none at the moment, if anyone would like to speak on this particular item, you can raise your hand using the Raise Your Hand feature on Zoom.
This is Sherry Redeman, City Clerk. Uh, Mayor, it looks like we have one individual who would like to speak to this item. Chris Flowers, if you would go ahead and state your name, you will have three minutes.
Hi, um, this is Chris Flowers. I wasn't really prepared to talk about this, but, uh, with sidewalk, like, the brick sidewalks being mentioned, um, I just was wondering, um, what's it like for people in, like, rascal scooters and, like, wheelchairs to be going over brick sidewalks? 'Cause when I drive over it in a car, it's, it's bumpy and uncomfortable, and if, if brick sidewalks are more uncomfortable for, um, people in wheelchairs, um, I think we should look into replacing them with the, the smooth concrete ones. And also, another thing I was wondering about is, can, I, I mean, I don't really know a bunch about how neighborhoods get money, but just from paying attention the past couple years, I was wondering if there's any way the neighborhoods can use money they get for sidewalk repairs, like, instead of, um, a neighborhood newsletter, if, if any of that money can go to be used to helping out the poor people in the neighborhoods who who can't afford sidewalk repairs? Thank you.
Mayor Finkel, I. Thank you. Any other comments, Sheri?
Sheri Redeman, City Clerk. No, Mayor.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you. Any questions or comments before we proceed?
Vice Mayor Shipley, I think my, again, this is great. It's fantastic. I love it. I'm sure people who love data also love it. My only concern is waiting another year for sidewalks just because, again, if I, again, if I understand the map, that isn't a low-to-mod area. I understand that they're still working on it. But also, I know they've been working on it for a few years now. And so I kind of wonder, since things are sort of already off schedule because of COVID, why the rush? Why, why not wait one year to make sure that the whole community is included in this? That, that was kind of one of my concerns. As usual, I will always say, sidewalks are infrastructure. People should not be paying for them out of pocket. It does not matter to me that we subsidize a certain amount of it for people who are low income. Certainly, we're going to learn in some of these neighborhoods that those are going to be higher numbers for us in those years when we address those areas. We've never, ever talked to the community about whether they approve of paying for infrastructure out of pocket. We've gone quite out of our way not to ask them that. So I'm always going to bring that up. I would also say we, if I understand another commissioner's point that once the sidewalks are finished, that they might be interested in taking responsibility for them. And we've never really figured that out. And that's kind of fallen off. So those are the things I just wanted to bring up here. And yeah, I guess my main question, why, why the rush to push when we don't really have the information we need, number one, from the LiDAR, and secondarily, for the sidewalks?
Mayor Finkel, I. I would just, I, I do appreciate this information. I, I do like data. And I think I'm most, one of the commissioners among many who, who, you know, thought we should be focusing on the areas of the biggest need and the biggest bang for our buck and getting the most important sidewalks done fast, especially if this is going to be an eight-year-long process. So I appreciate this information. I think it's a good step forward. And I know Commissioner Shipley has strong feelings on sidewalks. And I'm sure from time to time, we'll continue to talk about that. But I do think this is a good, good step forward and pushes us in the right direction.
Commissioner Larson, I would agree with the mayor that I think this is a really good process. And, and what I think we've seen the past few years in this program is that each year, we come up with a better way to implement the program. And I think it's important that we continue to make these, these strides in making the program as, as good as possible. And this is just another step in that. And I really appreciate staff continuing to work on this to make it better and better every year.
I don't have anything further to add outside of the comments. And Commissioner Shipley brought up something that I've mentioned several times about the city taking that on as infrastructure. Mayor and Commissioner Larson have excellent points. I would be ready to go ahead and make a motion if we wanted. Do we need to make a motion on this?
Mayor, you mean it?
Thank you. Mayor Finkel, I, yes, I do think we need a motion.
Okay, I would move to approve the proposed data-driven process to identify sidewalk improvement routes for the annual sidewalk improvement program.
Commissioner Larson, second.
Mayor Finkel, I, we have a motion by Commissioner Ananda, a second by Commissioner Larson. Commissioner Ananda?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commiss, Vice Mayor Shipley?
Aye.
Mayor Finkel, I, aye, passes four to zero. Last item that's been pulled from the consent agenda is eight, B8F, related to the Parks and Rec donation policy. Vice Mayor Shipley, I know you and a member of the public, but I'll let you go first.
Vice Mayor Shipley, I did also go and watch the Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting discussion for this, just to get some further information about it. My main concern was that I know there's a number of community groups. I, I think I saw once from Parks and Rec a list of over twenty-five groups that regularly are partners with Parks and Rec, including on sponsorships and donations. And as far as I can tell, none of them were notified to take part or look at this policy before it came forward. And I feel like we have been kind of hammering away at public engagement pretty hard. In that situation, just one email to each of the groups would have sufficed. So I would like to see that. There were other concerns with the policy that I had, including and was discussed by Parks and Rec, the kind of unclear murky nature between the sponsorship program and the... Even among the commissioners, they were still kind of unclear about what those differences were. In addition to that, I did, I mean, I do, from the perspective of someone who's been on some boards, had some concern about the verbiage in it, perhaps getting the impression that this, once something was donated, the city, to a certain extent, didn't want to take responsibility for it anymore. And so there was a sort of a, a sense in my reading it that there were kind of no guarantees. And someone said that on the Parks and Rec Board, which I appreciated that kind of viewpoint. So I, I ultimately, my ask is that a lot of those groups be notified and shown this. In addition to that, I know a year ago, we discussed a donation that was given to the city or was attempting to be given to the city of a bus shelter. And I seem to recall at that time, staff noticing that we don't have a policy like that overall for the entire city. And I wondered if it was just more appropriate to have a citywide policy for that rather than only one, one or two policies specific to Parks and Rec. So those were, those were some of my concerns about it.
Mayor Finkel, I, I guess maybe I'd ask Derek to respond first, then maybe for someone from this, from city management can talk about an overall policy. But Derek, you want to go ahead?
Sure, thank you. Derek Rogers, Director for Parks and Recreation. Policy, we've been, we're proud of the, the vast majority of donations probably go to Parks and Rec, whether it be an agency or nonprofit or an individual that donates food to a program, a class, or an agency that donates some funds so that when we do finger painting or Halloween painting in the downtown areas, memorial trees and benches. Where we've been lacking for a long time has been in the land donation. We accept a lot of land donations. We have two individuals, or two individuals and other groups that try to donate land. And we're trying to get a good process to review and evaluate, not only with Parks and Rec, but other city agencies. So for example, some of them may have stormwater issues that we need to review. So when we looked at this policy, first, we tried to mirror the sponsorship policy, which we need to go back and double-check that. But two, we looked at best practices across the country so that as administrative policy, staff can review the asset being donated before, in this case, land is going to exceed $20,000. We'll go to the city commission for the final decision. But we really wanted to have a way of assessing not only the asset, but what are the long-term maintenance costs associated with maintaining that asset? We can certainly take it back and work towards a city policy. It gets a little more unique when you look at each department's a little bit different on donations. So the intent, obviously, is not to turn away donations, but to review the donations coming in.
Mayor Finkel, I, does anyone want to talk about the citywide policy? Any thoughts on that?
Mayor, this is Casey Toomey, Assistant City Manager. Excuse me, should have done that before I unmuted. I would add that Jeremy Wilmeth, the Finance Director, and I had a similar conversation. And I think our thought is that a citywide policy would mirror and build on this policy that the Parks Board has adopted. So I think that that is in the works. It just, this was sort of a more pressing matter and was ready to go. So I think you'll see a citywide policy coming that maybe can, as Derek said, be tailored a little bit more individually to some of the needs of the other departments. Jeremy, I don't know, he's on here. I don't know if he would add anything.
Jeremy Wilmeth, Finance Director. No, I think, I think Casey covered it well. We sort of used this as a bellwether, if you will, since Parks takes in predominantly the majority of all donations, with the exception of that one donation that was mentioned for the Transit Department. The majority of donations go through the Parks Department. So we felt that was the appropriate starting place.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you for that. Other questions before we open it up to public comment?
Vice Mayor Shipley, I just want to mention one more thing. I noticed in a lot of the discussion, Roger was giving the presentation at Parks and Rec. There is, if I understand correctly, there is often some other kind of agreement or an MOU that might accompany a donation or a sponsorship. But that's not really clearly delineated in this policy or this sponsorship policy. And so I, maybe I wondered if that being more clear might clear up some of the murk between the sponsorship and the donorship policy? You know, do you always expect to have another ancillary agreement if someone makes a big donation? Or $10,000 donation? Or is it only on a case-by-case basis that you look at other kinds of agreements?
I'm Derek Rogers, Director for Parks and Recreation. And in some cases, some donors may request that stipulation, that a lillian or a gazebo might be named after that donor or shelter. So I think that would be case by case. I'll let Roger chime in if he's got a different opinion.
Yeah, Roger Steinbrock, Marquee Supervisor. Derek is absolutely right. You know, in the past, when we've had donations, they usually have a contract that is formally, you know, for the bigger gifts. One, one thing that I'm thinking of is the, the Land Trust that we have. There were some specifications written in there that the, the trails can only be swapped by hand, which we have to go in and do. And then also, the trail's name was given a specific name after someone that owned the land. So that, to me, I mean, when we get up to that, to me, this whole thing was setting up that, that tier level of money so that you would make the decisions for the, the bigger gifts, per se. And I tried to mirror it to the sponsorship policy as has been stated. One of the reasons being is that there was a whole section within the sponsorship policy that we put in with Commissioner Bulley's suggestions in terms of, you know, the amount that is paid for, for bricks and mortar and those types of things from the sponsorship's policy standpoint. The donation side, it goes to what Derek was saying in terms of upkeep. So if, if we're going to take a donation in, are we accepting it just as is? And then we have to bring it up to a standard? Or will they help pay for that for a period of time? To me, that's the specifications that go into a contract or something based off the policy. But we can change as needed.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you. Maybe we'll open it up for public comment and then come back for comments and discussion. If, and I know Shannon Hodges is, Shannon Hodges has wanted to pull this, so I know she wants to speak. But if anyone else wants to speak on this item, please raise your hand. And Sheri will call upon you.
Sorry, Mayor, I didn't want to interrupt, but this is Carrie Altenburn. But there's no raise my hand option on my screen.
Then waving is fine. Sheri will call on you.
Sorry to interrupt.
This is Sheri Redeman, City Clerk. Shannon Hodges, if you would please state your name. You can go ahead, and you will have three minutes.
Okay, yes, I'm Shannon Hodges. And I'm the board president for Friends of Oak Hill Cemetery. We're a nonprofit group concerned with advocacy and preservation at Oak Hill. And...
Hey, Shannon? This is Mayor Finkel, I. Shannon?
Read some talking points that we had regarding this policy. The first were already stated by Vice Mayor Shipley, which is that this policy was not...
Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, Shannon, that might help if you turn your, your video off because you're really breaking up.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Mayor Finkel, I, we can hear you better now. Please try again.
Okay, is this better?
Mayor Finkel, I, much better, though. Thank you.
Can you hear me okay now?
Mayor Finkel, I, yes.
You can?
From the top, we did not catch much of anything.
I think when my kids get on, yeah. Anyway. Okay, I'll just, I'll start over. So I'm the board president for Friends of Oak Hill Cemetery. We're a nonprofit organization concerned with advocacy and historic preservation at Oak Hill. And I just, you know, a few of the points that I had are the same as Mayor, Vice Mayor Shipley in that, you know, one of our great concerns about this policy was that as a partner organization, it was not shared with us, nor any other organizations that we're aware of. And we also felt that there was sort of cart before the horse issue with this as far as Parks and Recreation setting a donation policy and then the city mirroring that as opposed to the inverse. And then we had some specific concerns about the policy and the wording in it. It, the policy, as it's written now, does not specify what organizations, such as Friends of Oak Hill Cemetery, can do with donations that are intended to benefit city property that are maintained by Parks and Recreation. Meaning, you know, right now, we have funds that we have been, that have been donated to us in order to use those for work at the cemetery. However, this policy would, guidelines would now apply to that money as, that didn't apply at the time that it was donated. And we also didn't see that there's anything in this policy to guarantee how those funds would go towards the cemetery through this policy. Also, the wording about the approval process for small donations is confusing. In Section Five, Levels of Donation, it identifies the approval process for donations that are projected to be valued at $9,999 or less. It isn't clear if this means that donations of far less.[1760.34] It isn't clear if this means that donations of far less, for instance, a $10 donation would have to be approved by Parks and Recreation. Also does not specify how in-kind donations of those lower amounts would be, you know, what the approval process would be for that. We also had concerns about the language in the policy that states the city maintains its donation program as a non-public forum and exercises sole discretion over what is accepted according to the terms of this policy. That wording seems to be the exact opposite of the goals stated in the policy of transparency and accountability. Additionally, the capitalization threshold of the city is referenced, but that is not detailed as to what that, what that means and what that amount is. Again, it feels an issue of transparency and accountability. The biggest concern that we had kind of goes hand-in-hand with the larger concern of our organization, which was, am I timed out?
Yes, Shannon.
Oh, okay.
You can finish that sentence, though, and then be done.
Was that how specifically does this policy apply to properties such as Oak Hill Cemetery that are on the National Historic Register? Being on the National Historic Register includes related regulations and stipulations on how donations can be used and what needs to happen with them, so.
Mayor Finkel, thank you, Shannon.
Okay, Sheri Redeman, City Clerk. Carrie Altenbrun, you can go ahead, you have three minutes.
Thank you. We have a lot more, I'm with the, this is Carrie Altenbrun with Friends of Oak Hill Cemetery. And there are a lot of concerns we have on this. Shannon didn't, didn't get a chance to make all of, and I wouldn't have a chance to do all of them. The main problem of this, it was done without any input from any group that's, that's affected by it, except Parks and Rec. That is the opposite of transparency. And, and having Parks and Rec dictate the donation, in effect dictate the donation policy for the city, instead of the city coming up with its own donation poly, policy at the, at the first, and then have its subordinate departments follow that policy is backwards the way things should be legislated. This policy, as it's written, would have a major impact on the way the Friends of Oak Hill Cemetery could operate and do what its charter is to do, i- is to improve and protect Oak Hill Cemetery. As such, we should have had a lot more, we should have had input. We found out about this Monday. We had a special meeting yesterday evening to figure out what we were going to do, because it dropped, it literally dropped out of the sky on us. And there's other organizations out there who I'm sure don't even know about it, and they might be here with, with their problems with it if they knew. I think it's extremely premature, and it is bottom-up instead of what it should be top-down. I would strongly recommend that the Commission not pass this, put it back in for discussions at the citywide level, and, and if this is, if this is a critical matter that needs to Parks and Rec perhaps make a decision on, on one small aspect of it that's temporary, so Parks and Rec can, can do what they need to do for something, but have it be citywide and take care of everything from the, from the cities up down, not from Parks and Rec up. I have nothing wrong with Parks and Rec, they're a great group of people, but it, it just, just is done a bad way. This is not, not transparent. This is not the way things should be done. Thank you.
This is Sheri Redeman, City Clerk. I just wanted to confirm, if there is anybody else, please go ahead and raise your hand if you wanted to speak to this item. I can't read that name.
Jean Klein.
Sheri Redeman, City Clerk. Jean Klein, you may go ahead. Please state your name before you start.
I'll just, again, I'm a board member of the Friends of Oak Hill Cemetery, and I'll just add some of the points that our board talked about last night about this, again having to do with the fact that, that Oak Hill is owned by the city, but it's also on the National Historic Register, and the National Register has guidelines on how historic monuments or all monuments ought to be preserved and maintained. So one of the ideas that, that our organization is, well, first of all, one of the things we're planning on doing, we hope to do, is to write a grant to the Douglas County Heritage Conservation Council. So a question comes up, so let's say we win some money from the grant, do we have to report that to the city? Is that something that, that the city manager or the director or whoever in these levels has to approve the grant? And, you know, and, and now we're crossing, you know, city-county boundaries here, too. The other thing is, let's imagine that we get a grant and that we pay, that the grant pays for restorations of various monuments, do we have any guarantee from the city that those monuments will be maintained and preserved, that they will not be knocked into by lawn mowers, that weed whackers won't hit against the, the soft stone? I mean, these are all sorts of questions that, that we have that, that this policy does not, you know, it raises these kinds of ideas, but doesn't clarify what's going on. So I might add that Friends is also in the process of trying to work out a memorandum of understanding with the city that approaches some of these ideas. And, and we're in process with that. I understand we're still in the middle of, of doing, having meetings about that. The other idea that Friends is talking about is an adopt-a-grave program where individuals could choose a grave and, let's say, donate $500 or $100 for one particular grave, gravestone to have it fixed. So again, this policy, you know, speaks to that, and, and again, we need clarification on whether or not this policy would encourage people to donate and help the city preserve and maintain some gravestones, whether on a large basis with a grant or on a smaller basis by individuals. Thank you.
Chris Flowers, please state your name, you have three minutes.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers. I didn't study up on this at all, but I just listened into the Oak Park Cemetery people, they make some really good points, and I don't think we should be rushing this if it's, can potentially screw things up for their donations. Like, I, I mean, I don't think it was intended that way. I think it's just an oversight. I think the city should look into it before it passes something like this. Thank you.
This is Sheri Redeman, City Clerk. Mayor, I believe we have, that's the last of the public comment.
Mayor Finkel, thank you. Commissioners have questions or comments, or Commissioner Larson, looks like you unmuted?
Yeah, yeah, Commissioner Larson, I just had a question, at least one, for staff, for Parks and Rec staff, is what's the reasoning for putting this one together before we came out with a citywide one? Was there something that came up as far as donations go, or what happened?
Derek Rogers, Director of Parks Recreation. I'll let Roger finish up after I do. Some of it, we've had people waiting over a year to donate land, so we've been trying to get the policy in writing. We've taken donations, I can't think of too many donations we've ever turned away, and I don't expect to do that. We always like people donating money, especially to help support our Parks and Recreation programs. But we do need a written policy, and that's why we were going down this road. Roger, I'll let you continue on.
Yeah, it, it was mainly to formalize things, Commissioner Larson. And when I started writing this, it, I, I did work with legal in developing it, and that question did come up, that if it was overarching, and I went back to the policy on the sponsorships, that one is pertaining to Parks and Recreation specific as well. Now, that was because of the need for the sports pavilion, that, you know, sponsorship that they were looking for at that time. So, you know, it, in discussion, it just came about that it was fitting with, with what we're doing as a department. And I, I can let legal speak for the, you know, for the city side of things, and like Derek had said, I think that Parks and Recreation do get a majority of the gifts, but we're not the only ones, as we know.
Commissioner Larson, thank you very much. We've accepted land donations before, is that, am I correct on that? Correct?
Roger's Parks Recreation, that is correct. We've been reviewing the resources. We have a lot of donations that aren't necessarily the best donations. We get a lot of floodway, floodplain lands, which are fantastic for parks. Some of it, though, we look at, you know, what is the cost to improve that asset? What is the long-term cost to maintain it? And we wanted to have a process where we could actually review those assets as a staff have a position about what the actual costs are going to be before it went to the Commission at a, at a higher level. So we're trying to refine the process as administrative staff.
Commissioner Larson, again, so you indicated that, or some, I can't remember if it was Roger or you, Derek, had indicated that you've got folks wanting to donate land for a year, for the last year or two. What's preventing us from just moving forward with that, just like we have other lands in our system that have been donated?
Derek Rogers, Director for Parks Recreation. We actually want to get a process to review all the tracks. One track may have a playground and a basketball court on it. What's the status of those assets? So do we maintain the assets, do we replace the assets? If we take that as a donation from HOA? What are the risks? You know, is the grave around a body of water possibly a liability for the city? So we're trying to get all the staff to review the property before we present it to the City Commission, so that the City Commission will have a firm decision on what asset we may be taking.
Thank you. Commissioner Larson, again, one, another question. So what's preventing you from go, from moving forward with setting standards and guidelines for acceptance of donations without this, this policy? Because we've done that.
Can you check speak the audio?
Uh-uh. It's dead, though. Do you see, we're not blue?
Yeah, I'm not getting any audio at all.
It did what it, what we've talked about, where it just shifted arbitrarily, but now I can't get it back.
Do you have a speaker icon?
Hang on.
We need, I can't hear.
Oh, your camera's not on live. Your camera's on part of it. But we're still chatting away, something.
But I need to be able to hear what they're saying.
Me, too.
I have no idea what happened.
They need to pop, they're gonna have to pause the meeting until I can...
But they can't hear you, so.
No, but I'm talking to Brad. I don't have a clue what happened, it just stopped.
Looks like your...
Oh, we got, we have, wait, it's, we're on.
Your camera's back.
No, I got the camera back, but the audio is still not on.
Try the, the sound thing to make sure you're on Zoom, canceling, blah, blah thing. Okay, I don't hear Brad. I see him talking.
Can they hear us, though?
No. Well, wait, I mean, I could turn it, I could get into an iPad, all the ridiculous things. Okay, Brad's, Brad's going to break, I'd say.
They said they could hear us. I need to just reboot the whole thing or something.
Yeah, again, they work with, I didn't, I didn't count. It's a pretty good list. Derek might know how many. It's definitely more than 25 groups that they have partnerships with. And all of those relationships are going to be unique. You know, there are people who focus on trails. There are people who focus on planters. There's all kinds of things that they, and, and, and the purpose of that engagement that we talk about so frequently is to look at some of those eventualities. I mean, I hate to pull Craig in here, but when we, he's going to be better at explaining what a good policy looks like. A good policy covers a lot of bases and has flexibility. And I, and I'm sure other, I know other groups even besides this one looked at it and were not sure where they fit into it. So, again, just an email and have those people come back to the Parks and Rec Board and, you know, maybe only hear from two or three people. Maybe, you know, maybe it's not a big deal. Maybe we just need to have it clarified that there will be ancillary agreements that go with sponsorship or donation. The good thing about a policy is you write it down, and then everyone knows what the There's no guessing or trying to figure out who the right person to call is to make those
I don't have a problem with sending it back, and I also wouldn't have a problem if we moved it forward, knowing that there's going to be changes coming down the pipe. But I do understand the need to make sure we have some community engagement on it. But I sure hope we don't get this, make this to the point where it's so complicated that we, it, it just gets to the point to where it, it just is difficult to make it work if we try to make it too complicated.
Vice Mayor Shipley, I, I appreciate that as well. I guess, you know, I read this matter on the consent agenda. I did not go back and watch the Parks and Rec meeting, and I thought it was a pretty good policy. So certainly, I wasn't reading it from the eyes of the Oak Hill Cemetery and how it might And so obviously, when people look at policies from different perspectives, they have, you know, different concerns about them. And obviously, you know, Oak Hill Cemetery is unique compared to someone who wants to donate land versus someone who, you know, wants to make a gift to the sanitary department or something. I mean, you know, again, when we start talking about a citywide policy, you start to get into lots of nuances. And so, again, I think this is a good step forward, but I, I obviously think we should, you know, step back, hear the concerns of, you know, Oak Hill Cemetery and, and proceed forward. And it could be that, at the end of the day, that there's a special policy for Oak Hill Cemetery that has nothing to do with the rest of them. I don't know. I'm just saying, sometimes one-size-fits-all is not the way we do things. It's not the best way to do things. Maybe it is, but I think it's something to consider. So I'm certainly willing to send it back and, and have it continue to be looked at.
Vice Mayor Shipley, yeah, again, they work with, I didn't, I didn't count. It's a pretty good list. Derek might know how many. It's definitely more than 25 groups that they have partnerships with. And all of those relationships are going to be unique. You know, there are people who focus on trails. There are people who focus on planters. There's all kinds of things that they, and, and, and the purpose of that engagement that we talk about so frequently is to look at some of those eventualities. I mean, I hate to pull Craig in here, but when we, he's going to be better at explaining what a good policy looks like. A good policy covers a lot of bases and has flexibility. And I, and I'm sure other, I know other groups even besides this one looked at it and were not sure where they fit into it. So, again, just an email and have those people come back to the Parks and Rec Board and, you know, maybe only hear from two or three people. Maybe, you know, maybe it's not a big deal. Maybe we just need to have it clarified that there will be ancillary agreements that go with sponsorship or donation. The good thing about a policy is you write it down, and then everyone knows what the expectation is. There's no guessing or trying to figure out who the right person to call is to make those things work.
Commissioner Larson here. I don't have a problem with sending it back, and I also wouldn't have a problem if we moved it forward, knowing that there's going to be changes coming down the pipe. But I do understand the need to make sure we have some community engagement on it. But I sure hope we don't get this, make this to the point where it's so complicated that we, it, it just gets to the point to where it, it just is difficult to make it work if we try to make it too complicated.
Vice Mayor Shipley, I, I appreciate that, and you're right, we do do that sometimes. I would also say that, you know, during the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, it was sort of suggestive that there is this disclarity between what a sponsorship and a donorship is, and that might be a really good opportunity for Parks and Rec to communicate with their partners about what the difference is and what the expectations are. So, and I understand that I'm throwing this back at them, and I apologize for that, but it is also an opportunity to touch base with people and know, and have them know more about what the expectation is and to feel ownership of it.
Mayor Finkel, I have other comments or motions?
This is Commissioner Nanda. Do we need a motion if we're just giving direction?
This is Sherry Redeman, City Clerk. If you are not wanting to approve it and just directing staff to work on it further, you do not need a motion to do that.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you for that clarification. Do we have the consensus just to let this sit and bring it back another time? Okay, it looks like we have that, so we will not take action on that item. And we will move to public comment. The public is allowed to speak to any items or issues except those scheduled on the consent agenda or regular agenda portions of the agenda. As a general practice, the commission will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Rather, they will refer the items to staff for follow-up if necessary. Individuals should address all comments and questions to the commission. Each person will be limited to three minutes. If you would like to make public comment, please raise your hand using the chat feature or turn your video on and give a big wave to Sherry.
This is Sherry Redeman, City Clerk. Chris Flowers, you may go ahead, please state your name. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers. I, I just wanted to share what happened when I, at the last Human Relations Commission, because back in June, then Mayor Nanda had asked on the HRC to examine ordinances that might be inequitable. And I've had a couple that I thought they could look at. And basically, what ended up happening is that they're not going to do it and that they, they're going to wait, I guess, till that, that police, the outside police review that we're doing looks at. And they did re, I think they did request that they look at a couple, at the couple that I brought up. And I, I just, I don't think this was a success at all, because they've been meeting every month since June, and the purpose of them meeting every month instead of quarterly was for that whole reviewing city ordinances. And I don't know, it just seems like we all dropped the ball. I should have, I should have approached them back in June as soon as I learned about it. I should have brought the ordinances then. Then maybe they would have got to them before that whole police review thing happened. And anyway, I was just, I think that you guys need to set, like, make an, like, actually task them with looking at city ordinances, because at the meeting, the city staff said that they, they're not tasked with looking at city ordinances. So that's one thing you all need to do, is actually task them with looking at it. Because also, when that police review is done, who is going to be looking at unfair city ordinances? Like, I think it should be them. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with waiting, but once the, that police review's done, I'm, I'm going to need somewhere to go with, like, trying to get the, like, allow, do away with the topless ban. So I'm just asking y'all if you can actually task the HRC with looking at city ordinances so that when that police review is done, that we have a place to take unfair city ordinances? Because I brought them up to City Commission before, and that, that never goes anywhere. So just want to throw that out there. Thank you.
This is Sherry Redeman, City Clerk. If anyone else would like to make general public comment, please raise your hand. Sherry Redeman, City Clerk, it doesn't appear, there is no one else that wants to provide comment there.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you. We'll move to regular agenda item number one, which is to consider approving the first quarter budget adjustment for 2021. It looks like Danielle turned her video on, so I will turn it over to her to make the presentation.
Wonderful, thank you. This is Danielle Bushcutter, Budget and Strategic Initiatives Administrator. I'm going to be going through the memo, kind of talking through the different budget adjustments for 2021. But before I do that, I actually want to pass it off to Jeremy Wilmeth, our Finance Director. We got a couple of questions from some commissioners about where we think we're going to end 2020. And so to keep everything kind of in chronological order, we thought we would touch base on 2020 first and then jump into 2021. So Jeremy, I will pass it off to you.
Thank you very much, Jeremy Wilmeth, Finance Director. Just want to quickly go over our projections for 2020 and just a couple of caveats, obviously. Since the city is under the generally accepted accounting principles by the Government Accounting Standards Board, we have to do accruals. So some of the revenue projections that we're making are based on what we anticipate that accrual to be, but we really won't know until February what those actual revenues are. So these are what I would call draft projections of where we anticipate 2020 to end up. We also asked all of the departments to anticipate their expenditures, so things that were purchased before the end of the year, but we won't get those invoices until sometime in January. Those have been included. Sherry Redeman, City Clerk, it doesn't appear, there is no one else that wants to provide comment there.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you. We'll move to regular agenda item number one, which is to consider approving the first quarter budget adjustment for 2021. It looks like Danielle turned her video on, so I will turn it over to her to make the presentation.
Wonderful. Thank you. This is Danielle Bushcutter, Budget and Strategic Initiatives Administrator. I'm going to be going through the memo, kind of talking through the different budget adjustments for 2021. But before I do that, I actually want to pass it off to Jeremy Wilmeth, our Finance Director. We got a couple of questions from some commissioners about where we think we're going to end 2020. And so to keep everything kind of in chronological order, we thought we would touch base on 2020 first and then jump into 2021. So Jeremy, I will pass it off to you.
Thank you very much, Jeremy Wilmeth, Finance Director. Just want to quickly go over our projections for 2020 and just a couple of caveats, obviously. Since the city is under the generally accepted accounting principles by the Government Accounting Standards Board, we have to do accruals. So some of the revenue projections that we're making are based on what we anticipate that accrual to be, but we really won't know until February what those actual revenues are. So these are what I would call draft projections of where we anticipate 2020 to end up. We also asked all of the departments to anticipate their expenditures. So things that were purchased before the end of the year, but we won't get those invoices until sometime in January. Those have been included as well as our final payroll of the year, which is being processed right now. So those are all the estimates that have sort of been put together to make this presentation tonight. So just a reminder that this report's not looking at the entire budget, but is only looking at those things that are considered to be major funds, a fund that has more than $500,000 of an appropriation. The radiant scale that we've been using this year is a positive outlook for revenue as any, any positive growth at all. And then as long as we're within 2% of our budget projection. Apologize that they're vacuuming outside. As long as we're within 2% of our predict, projection, that's a positive outlook. Anything between 2% to 5% of our production, projection would be an area of concern. And then anything greater than 5% would be a negative outlook. So just looking at the projected revenues, we anticipate that will be 2 million, 2.05 million or just over 1.34% over our revised budget for 2020. So looking at property taxes, they're pretty much right online with where we thought they would be. Property taxes are fairly easy to predict. Really, the only variable that's going to be involved with property taxes is people that don't make their payment on time. And so those payments end up late. Sales tax and use tax are actually quite a bit higher than the revised budget. As you all recall, during the 2021 budget process, we talked about what we called our COVID worst case scenario. And it was agreed that we would use those as the basis of our projection for 2020 so that it would be the worst case scenario of what we could potentially experience in terms of revenue loss. Thankfully, the Douglas County community did not experience that level of revenue loss. So while our revenues are lower than last year, they are higher than that worst case scenario budget. And then franchise fees for both electric and natural gas are a little bit, are, one's 8%, one's 11% off of our target. The telecommunication franchise fees are about 4.8% off our target. The gasoline tax, this is one that we really thought we would take a tremendous hit on when COVID started. Thankfully, that did not happen as either. So it's higher than our revised budget. The transient gas tax is another one of those where it's lower than last year, but it's higher than what we had originally anticipated on our worst case scenario. And then the liquor tax is actually quite a bit lower than what we had anticipated. Water and sewer fees are pretty much right in line with where our targeted budget was. Solid waste is about 4.5% less than what we had anticipated. Roll-off fees are about 13.65% lower. And then the last two major revenues are the stormwater fees that are pretty much in line with budget and the Douglas County EMS. Our projection is that we'll be within 1% of our budget. So just quickly, we talked about sales tax. Obviously, COVID was a tremendous impact. We have been reporting on sales tax monthly. And as you saw in those reports, month over month, the use tax, the taxes that are paid by people that purchase things outside of Douglas County, or outside of Lawrence, excuse me, is up significantly, but the actual sales taxes is down. The areas hit hardest in our sales tax are the restaurants and the bars. Our sales tax was buoyed, if you will, by increases in grocery stores, which we had anticipated, but it was even better than we had anticipated. And then the one we did not anticipate was increase at home improvement stores. So those are really what sort of were a shock absorber, if you will, to the overall impact of, of what we experienced on, from sales tax. With the electric franchise fee, really just looking at it month by month, the, the summer months of 2020 were, were less than the summer months of 2019. So that comparison showed what we will, to believe to be a milder summer. I think some of that could be due to businesses that shuttered and, and employee, employees were working from home. But that was what we noticed with the electric franchise fee. And natural gas, as we've reported throughout the year, it really was a much more mild winter at the start of 2020 compared to 2019. Covered all that. So looking at the general fund and just comparing the revenues in 19 with the revenues in 20, you'll see that our revenues are up about $1.5 million. The majority of that is property taxes and sales taxes. The largest reductions in revenue year over year would be the fines and penalties. As you all know, the, not only did the court shut down, but for a long time, there were no parking enforcement activities going on. And then we also have reductions in franchise fees, which I discussed. So looking at the revised budget, I want to just remind everybody, the original budget for 2020 was 81.18 million. We revised that down to 73.7 in our worst case scenario. And then, as you can see, thankfully, we brought, we anticipate that we will bring in about 76.7 million or 2.9 million more than our revised budget, but still less than the original budget. So when we look at all of the major funds, you can see that our revenue is pretty much neck and neck with last year. The increases in some funds help offset the decreases in others. The, the major revenues that are, what would be new to the city this year would be the CARES Act and the other Community Development Block grant funds that the federal government provided to help with the COVID relief effort. And then, as you all recall, in 2020, we started an administrative services fund. And so basically those costs that used to be borne solely by the general fund are now shared. And so the general fund pays its allocable share as well as all the other funds. Those are now being reported in the administrative services fund. And that's about 4.8 million this year. So then comparing to budget, this one's a little bit more unique in that our original adopted budget was 223.57 million, but that did not have the federal, the federal grant was around 3 million and it's now around 11. So you can see there is substantial growth there. But there were reductions in other funds, much of, such as the general fund and the water and sewer fund. So comparing the revised budget to revenue, you can see that we're about 5.5 million off or a little, a little over 2.6%. Moving to the other side of the ledger now and looking at expenditures, any expenditure that's within 2% is positive. 2% to 5% is an area of concern and anything more than five is a negative outlook for purposes of our projections. When we looked at where all the departments thought their expenditures would end at the end of this fiscal year, we believe will be around $3.4 million under our current budget or just at 1.53%. So the majority of the budget, personnel services, the contractual services, internal services, commodities, et cetera, are all pretty much right in line with where the departments thought they would be based on their projections. Capital lay is a little bit under. That's predominantly in water, wastewater projects that haven't, either got started late due to COVID or have not started at all due to COVID. So those funds and those projects are just in the hopper, if you will, into 2021 as we start the new year. The other category looks like a really large variance. And it is from a percentage perspective, but the dollar amount is around $170,000, I believe. And that's really the bad debt write-off for the utility fund. It typically has occurred during the audit, so it doesn't show up until we work on those gap statements. But our staff is trying to get ahead of that curve this year. And so those adjustments have already been made. And that's really what we outlined here. And so looking at the expenditures for the general fund, because of the internal service funds that began in 2020, it's not a apples-to-apples comparison with 2019. As you can see, the information technology was a general fund department in 19. It's now a part of the administrative services. The finance department staff was in the general fund. It's now an administrative services. What's left over under the, under the heading of finance are those internal transfers to other funds and some general administrative expenses for the, for the entire general fund. Comparing now to budget, the adopted budget was 82.14 million. We revised that down to just over around 80.9 million. And the expenses are projected right now to be 78.2. So it's about a $2.6 million variance between budget. So then again, we wanted to show all the expenditures for the major funds. You can see last year is about 193 million. This year, it's a little over 230 million. Again, the administrative services is new. The federal grant for CARES Act and other COVID-related projects is new. And more money was spent this year on the, from the water and sewer fund for the non-bonded construction as compared to 2019. So then looking at the expense budget, the original budget was 235.39 million. It's now 238.67 million. Again, the large part of that goes to the federal grant, going from 3 million to 11 million. But you can see where all the various funds land. The overall projection is that will be just over $8 million under our budget, which is about 3.39% of the total budget. And then this slide, I apologize, there's a lot on here, but what we're trying to do is show what the undesignated fund balance is in the audit of 2019. What we projected the revenues to be for 20, what we projected the expenses to be for 20, what those revenues are as a, either more or less than the expenditures, and then what that does to fund balance. So you can see fund by fund, what we're looking at here. Really, the, the only fund of, the only funds that are, are the negative ones right now are the grant funds. The central maintenance fund is actually being rolled into the administrative services fund. So by the time we get to the audit, that'll be a zero balance because those funds and expenditures will be a part of the administrative services fund. As you can see, some of the other funds, we're closing out. The recreation fund, the golf course fund are being folded into the general fund as we discussed during the budget. So that's a pretty quick overview. We'll have this up on our website tomorrow for anybody who would like to view it. Again, these are just projections, but we wanted to give you all and the, the public a general indication of where we think we're going to end when all the, when all is said and done with the fiscal year activity for 2020.
This is Mayor Finkel. I, yeah, that was a lot of information pretty quickly. I'd still need to digest that, but is there, I guess I want to, I mean, it looks like, I've been using, one of my questions was, you know, we had a fund balance, looks like in the general fund of 24.7 million. At the end of 19, it looks like we'll have 23.175. At the end of this year, we're projecting. So we, is, is, is it a layman's way to say we spent down 1.6 million of our general fund? Is that a, is that accurate? Am I reading that right?
Jeremy Wilmeth, Director of Finance, yes. I, I think what I would say is that when we, when we put the budget together with that worst case scenario, we had anticipated that we would spend approximately, help me out Danielle, was it 7 million in fund balance?
Yes.
There was seven or eight million. I, I don't recall right now, unfortunately, but, and so what we're showing is that the activity throughout the year was actually better. The revenues were better than we anticipated. The expenditures weren't as severe as we had anticipated. And so the reduction to fund balance is projected right now to be 1.5 million. That may fluctuate, you know, slightly as we, as we finalize some of the accounts. For example, the federal grants, we're showing a negative number. We can't. So the general fund may have to absorb that 100,000. But we don't, we don't believe that it's going to be anywhere near that initial six, six, eight million dollar range that we had discussed during the 2021 budget process, which is good news. The sales tax came in much stronger than we had anticipated. So even when we absorb losses in the recreation fund and the golf course fund, the special alcohol fund, et cetera, the overall impact of the general fund is still keeping us within our current target for fund balance.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you. That, that helps. Have the commissioners have questions for Jeremy?
This is Commissioner Nanda. I think the only one that you didn't address on this page that stands out to me is CDPG. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Jeremy, Finance Director, yeah, a lot of the grants, the reason, what makes them very challenging is it's all timing related. So we will get that money in the, in 2021, but it will be after the reporting period for 2020 ends. So most things to do with the federal government, you spend the money upfront and then they reimburse you. And so their, their fiscal year is different than our fiscal year. And so timing issues almost always keep grant funds in a negative position. But we, we will get those funds for the CDPG program in 2021.
Commissioner Nanda, thank you.
Commissioner Larson here. Jeremy, you had said something about expenditures being less than what we had anticipated. Can you explain why that would, why that occurred? Why that may have occurred?
Jeremy Wilmeth, Finance Director, it's, it's kind of challenging to give an overall global anticipation or answer for why that occurred when we have so many different departments that are carrying out multiple projects. But from, from what I saw in the discussions I had with the departments, it appeared that some of the projects that had initially been considered in the CIP got delayed due to COVID. Whether it be contractor delays or other priorities then jumped to the top. And so while those are under, underspent in 2020, we do anticipate that those dollars will be spent in 2021.
Thank you.
If anybody, any other questions for Jeremy before we turn it back to Danielle?
Commissioner Larson, I do have one more question. The spreadsheet that you have up right now, all major funds, are the projected expenditures and projected revenues, is that the adjusted numbers?
Jeremy, Finance Director, when you say adjusted, do you mean for accruals?
Well, for 2020, I know we did an adjustment at one point. I thought. So these weren't from the adopted budget?
Jeremy, Finance Director, these are the actuals that we're projecting right now.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
I compared it to the budget on a few slides prior.
Yeah.
The revenue and the expenses. So this is where we believe, when all is said and done and the CAFRA is produced, the comprehensive financial report is produced, this is where we believe we're going to land fund by fund on the major funds. We have some, you know, minor funds that, they don't, they don't have a significant impact on the operations. And so basically for for size limitations, we, we exclude those funds when we talk about the, the majority of the government's operations.
Commissioner Larson, thank you. That, that made it real clear. Thank you. Commissioner Larson, thank you. That that made it real clear. Thank you.
Mayor Finkel, if there's no other questions, we'll turn back to Danielle.
All right. Thank you, Danielle Bush, kind of budget and strategic initiatives administrator. So now that we've kind of talked through 2020, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and kind of walk through the item before you tonight, which is to consider approving the first quarter budget adjustment for 2021. So I'm going to go ahead and share. Um, so wanted to highlight that this quarterly budget adjustment process is really new with 2021. And we wanted to implement this change to keep you all informed of changes that happen throughout the year, keep the public informed about those changes. And this really allows us to address unforeseen expenditures. We're going to talk a little bit about some of those CIP and capital projects that we need to carry forwards and fund balances for because they didn't actually occur in 2020, but we still want to use those dollars for those same purposes in 2021 and really allows us to remain flexible. So we might towards the end of the year and in that fourth quarter budget adjustment bring forward a statutory budget adjustment if we need to increase the statutory expenditure authority for a particular fund. And if that does occur, there is a public hearing that would be held related to that with public notice. And that that legal formal process, the item before you tonight is really informational in in nature and really approving rollover of funds. But does not statutorily increase the expenditure authority that you all adopted as part of the 2021 budget. And I always like to say that with the caveat of when we adopt the statutory budget, it does include the operating budget that we talk about, and it also includes fund balance. So as we will note in here, some of these items will be using fund balance. But that is included in our statutory budget that is adopted. So the other thing I want to note kind of at a high level, some common themes that will become evident very quickly as I go through kind of fund by fund to the changes that are being presented tonight. A lot of them are related to items that were identified in the previous year, but did not get underway. For one reason or another, COVID was obviously a major driver of a lot of that. So some of those large capital projects were requesting to kind of roll those dollars forward. Dollars were identified in 2020, but we weren't able to actually get a contract underway in 2020 to spend those proceeds. So we need you all to to reauthorize use of those dollars for those particular purposes. We also found a couple errors after we adopted the 2021 budget that we wanted to clean up. And some unforeseen expenditures as well. So with that, I'm going to go through fund by fund each of these different adjustments that are being requested from you all. And then at the end, would be happy to answer any questions that you all may have. And I know there's a couple folks on the line for some of the capital projects as well, if there are specific questions there, but we will start initially with the general fund and an error that we found after we adopted the 2021 budget. So as you all are aware, we pulled in the recreation fund, special recreation and the golf course into the general fund. And in that manual process, we realized a little too late in the process that some of the FICA costs related to some of our part time staff did not get transferred over appropriately. So we need to increase our FICA line item to account for that part time staff that we do anticipate needing throughout the year for various parks and recreation programs. The second item noted is a net neutral item, but it would require an increase in both revenues and expenditures. Midway through 2020, we changed how we were accounting for collection fees with some of the costs related to and collection costs related to municipal court. So in that accounting function, we used to net some things. And instead of netting the collection fees out of what we collected, well, we need to now account for it as a revenue and an expense. So that is more of an accounting function, but we need to update the budget to really account for that accounting change for collection fees. The next item identified is more of the the roll forward type of item. So in the 2020 budget, we had dollars set aside for climate protection plan. Because of COVID, this got started at the very end of 2020, and so we weren't able to get a contract in place for that. It is currently underway and moving forward. So we need to roll those dollars forward to 2021 to be able to enter into that contract, to be able to move that climate protection plan forward. And then the final general fund item noted here is to reinstate some general economic development funds as well as additional funding for outside legal counsel. We often use outside legal counsel. Oh, sorry, I'm getting a little feedback. Okay, sorry about that. These are often costs that we incur throughout the year. We changed where we budgeted for these types of expenses in 2021. And in that process, they were inadvertently removed. So we need to add those dollars back in. We do often spend these dollars throughout the course of the year and often need to kind of act quickly with those. So we are asking that those be reinstated. So the the totality of those impacts is $475,000, which will come from fund balance and savings from other line items that are identified throughout the year. Moving on to the airport fund, we were notified in late 2020 of an award through the Kansas Department of Transportation for an aviation grant. We don't know with those grants, there's always a matching component related to it. So we don't know the exact amount of what that dollar impact is going to be, but we do know that it is going to be forthcoming. And so even though we didn't have that specific dollar amount, we wanted to bring it forward to your attention. You will likely see this in a future budget adjustment memo. Once we do have that that total dollar amount of what the actual match will be. So that will be forthcoming. We just wanted to get it on your radar because we knew it was coming down the pike. Moving on to the capital improvement reserve fund. These are all capital projects that were delayed for one reason or another. So we didn't actually spend those dollars for the these particular programs in 2020. There's still an identified need for funding of those programs. So this is requesting that we roll forward all of those unspent dollars to 2021. The one caveat I would note here is that in 2021, you may recall that we moved our CIP, our capital projects into our capital projects fund instead of in the capital improvement reserve fund. So rolling forward, these dollars will show up as a transfer out of the capital improvement reserve fund into the capital projects fund so that we can maintain that consistency and have all of our capital projects coming out of the capital projects fund. Speaking of the capital projects fund, there's one project identified here, the youth sports complex exit street extension where an additional $300,000 was identified through 2020 federal fund exchange dollars that the city received. There was a memo back in December kind of highlighting this. There was initially when we wrote the memo going to be an agenda item for your consideration tonight related to that project. That will actually show up on your January 12 meeting. So that'll that'll really be the time where you can make a decision related to that particular project, but this would be authorizing that roll forward if you do want to move forward with that particular project. Moving forward to the solid waste fund, there was one project here, the alley rehab project. This project was actually bid out, but the bids came in higher than initially anticipated. So there was a better use of dollars if if we waited and combine the 2020 dollars with the 2021 dollars. So we would need to, again, roll these dollars forward for 2021 so that we can do the the needed improvements to some alley rehabilitation. We are, we're getting close here to the the last few funds. The first is the stormwater fund. So as we were going through our our budget double check process after the budget was adopted, we realized that there were two maintenance projects that were inadvertently budgeted twice in the stormwater fund. So we need to take those dollars back out so that we're only doing those maintenance projects once. This was really identified and caught as we started getting into the rate model. So the rate model that you all approved and the rates that you approved did not include that additional 335,000. We caught it before then. So we just need to reduce the budget to align with that accurate number. Then we do have another roll forward amount identified for unspent maintenance projects that there still is a need for that. There was an item related to this on the consent agenda to move these dollars forward on for your consideration tonight. Um, the last couple items here for stormwater, one is there was a contract awarded at your final meeting in December for the storm sewer replacement project. We weren't able to get that contract physically signed before the end of the year was over. So it will be signed in 2021, at which point we can encumber those funds. So we do need to roll that that project budget forward in order to do that. And then the final item listed here under the stormwater fund is related to the storm system identification asset and model creation project that was approved as part of the 2021 budget. So that had a capital component in it. It also had an operation component in it. If you'll recall, we added three additional staff members to the stormwater fund in 2021 to help with this program and this project. And when we did that, it was dependent upon the rates being approved and adopted by you all. So we included that as one lump sum in the budget, and now we need to move those dollars to the appropriate line items for those for those staff. So more of an administrative function that we need to do, but wanted to make you aware of it as it is, is a large dollar amount. Moving forward to the administrative services fund. So there were two kind of staffing related items listed here. So one is opening up the new information window at City Hall. This is a position that is staffed by the city clerk's office. And funding for this position was not included in the 2021 budget. That position is currently filled and we are now using it now that the renovations have been completed. So we need to add funding into the budget for that particular position as well as a new part time position in the finance department for help with some accounting needs that we have throughout the year. So both of those items happened after the 2021 budget was adopted. So we do need to add those dollars back in those two items, which total about 107,000 dollars will impact the other operating budgets. If we're not able to find kind of cost savings throughout the year to offset that. And then the final item in the administrative services fund is a need that was identified to increase the janitorial services at City Hall to ensure safe working environment and really increase the frequency of cleaning that is happening at City Hall. So the facility maintenance has been moved to the general fund in anticipation of that being that functioning more as an internal service fund in the very near future, but for now it is still 100% funded through the general funds that will be an additional impact on the general fund. And then we will wrap it up with some additional water and wastewater construction projects. So these construction projects happen in the construction fund, Fund 552, instead of in the operating fund. But again, these are two projects that were budgeted for in 2020. And will need to be rolled forward into 2021 so that we can complete work on those different projects. So with that, I will stop sharing my screen. Again, a lot of information in a very short timeframe and open it up to any questions that you all may have.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you for that. Questions for Danielle? Mayor Finkel, I would say I do like this process. I, you know, having these brought forward to us and kind of understanding where they're at, I think is useful for not only the commission, but for staff and for the public and appreciate the the effort that has gone into this. I think this going forward as we continue to do this will be helpful for everyone to do it on a quarterly basis. So I appreciate that. I guess I would say, because a lot of this is rollover, would you generally generally expect the first quarter amendment to be the biggest of the amendments? And by the time we get to the end of the year, we wouldn't have quite so many?
This is Danielle Bush, kind of budget and strategic initiatives administrator. As we kind of saw in Jeremy's presentation, that capital component is a really large component. So as we move those projects forward, I would anticipate that being the bulk of it. I think it's it's hard to say because this is a new process that definitively this will be the largest because we just don't know that yet. I think through time we will get much better at this process, but the capital component certainly is going to be a really large component of kind of this roll forward process.
I think a lot of that makes sense. And certainly I appreciate it. Other questions?
Commissioner Larson, a question. Danielle, could you explain again, and I apologize for having you do this. I didn't quite catch it all. Could you explain again the reasoning for moving items from the capital reserve fund into the capital projects fund?
Sure. This is Danielle Bush, kind of budget and strategic initiatives administrator. Really, the idea there was to hopefully in the future help simplify things so that all of our capital improvement plan projects have one funding source. All of our vehicle and equipment replacement plan items have one funding source. In that case, it's the equipment reserve fund. And then all of our maintenance projects are in kind of their appropriate operating budgets. So hopefully in the future, it's really to help simplify things. We're kind of in that cleanup process now of moving from one philosophy to another. But really, the intent was that you could see the CIP in one fund, vehicle and equipment replacement in one fund, and then maintenance in the operating funds.
Commissioner Larson, thank you. That makes it much clearer. Thank you.
Mayor Finkel, have other questions before I open it up to the public for comment? Oh, Commissioner Lawson.
Commissioner Larson, one more question. I looked through on the capital improvement reserve fund projects, the 2.082 million dollars worth. I couldn't find the item, the asset management program for 192,000 dollars. I couldn't find that in our capital improvement plan. And I was wondering if somebody could check that out at something. I don't need to know like right now, but maybe send me an email or something as to where that's at. I couldn't find it for someone.
This is Danielle Bush, kind of budget and strategic initiatives administrator. I can I can touch on it at a very high level. Melinda might be able to add some more detail, but when we got those additional federal exchange dollars in late 2020, staff identified a number of allocations for those dollars. One of which was this asset management program, which essentially we moved it up to 2020. We didn't quite get to it. So we're essentially moving it back to 2021, which is where it was initially budgeted in the CIP.
Okay, thank you.
Jeremy, Finance Director, if I could just add one of the things we explored doing in the 2021 CIP was an unique project number for every project. And we realized that that was going to be very cumbersome, not only for staff, but also for the the public. And so the number that's actually in the 2021 CIP is the exact same number that you're seeing there, except it says 21 instead of 20. But because we made that change, so now we're going to keep the for projects, it's going to be one project number for the life of the project, which we believe will be easier for the public. which we believe will be easier for the public and everyone to follow. But we have to update our reports, of course, so that we kept that number to say to stay consistent with that new philosophy.
Okay. Commissioner Larson, thank you. I see it now in my spreadsheet, so okay, I found it. 21, that helps a lot. Thank you.
Mayor Finkel, I will go ahead and open this up to the public for any comment. If you if anyone would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature or turn your video on and give a wave. Sherry will let us know.
Caitlin McDermid, if you would please state your name, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, this is Caitlin McDermid. I just wanted to quickly mention that if there's going to be something on the agenda on the 12th for the 27th Street that the Mutt Run Group needs to be notified because they'll be very upset if something happens to put that through without us being able to be part of that discussion. Thank you.
This is Sherry Redeman, City Clerk, and there is no one else has indicated they would like to comment on this item.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you for that. And to follow up on Caitlin's comment, and I think you said this, Danielle, but I want to be sure if we approve this budget adjustment and then do something different next week on that particular item on our agenda, that will trump this action tonight, correct?
This is Danielle Bush Cutter, Budget and Strategic Initiatives Administrator. Yes, this is not a binding action. It just gives you the authority to make that decision if it were to be a yes at your at your future meeting, but it does not bind you to that.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you. Other questions or comments? Motion?
This is Commissioner Nanda. I appreciate the work on this, and I would move to approve the first quarter budget adjustment presented.
Commissioner Larson, second that.
Mayor Finkel, there's a motion by Commissioner Nanda, a second by Commissioner Lawson. Commissioner Nanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shipley? Mayor Finkel, aye, passes 4 to 0. Thank you for your work on that and and the update on the on the budget. I know at least I was one that asked for that, and you did that very well, but I know you did that a lot of work to get into that, so I appreciate that. Okay, now we'll move to regular agenda item number two, which is to receive a report on the emergency purchase order and to update the overnight update on the overnight winter shelter with recommendations for funding. And I believe Brandon, will you lead this one?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Brandon McGuire, Assistant City Manager. I'm going to provide some comments and a little bit of context for this presentation. And we also have some other staff and some of our volunteer partners on the call as well. And so about halfway through my presentation, I'm going to ask them to jump in and provide a little bit of additional comments and then bring it back to the commission for discussion of options. So a little bit of background, December 15th last year, the commission approved the ESG COVID-funded shelter program, which is to be hosted at the Econo Lodge and administered by the Lawrence Community Shelter. This is a program where we have access to 51 rooms, expected to serve up to 80 guests. It started December 30th and will run through March 2021. As of last night, and we don't have numbers of as of tonight, although I know Renee Cool is on the call. But as of last night, we had 51 people in that program using 30 rooms, so we still have some intake capacity. And we look forward to ramping that up and likely being full here within the next couple of days. This program helps address our goals for non-congregate sheltering and mitigates risk of COVID-19 transmission while also offsetting some of the capacity limitations at the LCS facility. And this program also comes as an addition to the 40 guests already at the LCS facility, as well as 20 guests at our Woody Park Camp. So that just provides a little bit of of context of how we got to the discussion about the item tonight. So also at that meeting, the commission authorized an additional $50,000 for a non-congregate cold weather overnight shelter. Very quickly, the city worked with the Coalition for Homeless Concerns to provide volunteer onsite program support. And we worked through an emergency purchasing process to obtain motel rooms under an agreement with Days Inn. And so that's that's the emergency purchase order report portion of tonight's agenda to just make sure that we we check the box in align with our purchasing policy based on that process. So the the cold weather shelter program started on December 23rd with, I believe, 35 guests that night. The occupancy very quickly increased to the point that more or less 100 guests per night were being served, and that that has continued for the last nine or 10 days, nine or 10 nights as as we've continued to run that. The Coalition's goal in supporting the program is to turn no guests away. And so to accomplish that goal, we've actually exceeded the capacity of the Days Inn and have been using the Super 8 Motel across the street as an overflow site. So we're renting several rooms from that property as well. So I want to take a moment to express gratitude for the Coalition and the volunteer team. Also, the Days Inn ownership, which has been a fantastic business partner as part of this program. And then our city staff, especially Mitch and Penny, who have been working on the program and pulling all of it off very quickly and through the holidays. They did, they did, everybody did fantastic work bringing it all together. But as expected, the program's been highly utilized and not without some growing pains and some concerns. Volunteer and city staff on the meeting are certainly welcome to jump in at any point and express some of those concerns and and talk about some of the experiences they have or respond to questions from the commissioners about that. But challenges I would I would point out in particular are damages to the property, some security concerns around the properties, and then obviously the the cost. This is a very expensive program. So on on that note, I would like to ask Derek Rogers to jump in. And if he could provide the most updated budget overview, there is an update that's attached to your agenda, but that still did not have last night's numbers. So Derek, are you able to do that and to share your screen with that information?
Rogers, Parks Recreation, and I will share my screen with last night's data. So what you're seeing here is from the inception on December 23rd with the rooms, and you see the white area, that is the Days Inn. So we started out with the Days Inn for the first three nights. When you get to December 26th, the yellow areas where we started renting rooms, the overflow with the super 8. So we started out with a budget of 50,000. We had a donation or there was the Coalition for the Homeless Concerns donated $5,875 directly to the hotel that is added to this budget. So last night, they served 102 guests using 44 rooms at Days Inn, 30 rooms at Super 8 for a total room charge last night of $4,108 approximately. And in this column over here is damages slash fines. So a fine could be smoking, a damage could be water damage to the carpet, things like that. Last night, I think damages were it was all damages and not fines, $2,898 for a total of about last night's cost, $6,998. So looking at what the budget we started at and with the the group, the Coalition for the Homeless addition of $5,875, we started out with $55,875. And expenses before we went into the hotels this evening, total expenses were $56,816, and that had us in the red for $941. Damages have been approximately 26% of the budget. So with that, I will pass it back to Brandon or if he's to continue.
Thank you, Derek. Just a just a few more comments from me. So one of one of the items that we discussed with the commission at the last meeting was the possibility of alternative funding sources. And so I wanted to provide a quick update on that. We we are reaching out to some of our other government partners at the county and the state about potential options. At this point, we do not have a strong lead. And there's certainly no guarantee that one will emerge for this particular program. But we we certainly will continue working on grant funding and alternative funding sources for the possibility of reimbursement of of costs that we incur as part of this program. I do want the commission to be aware of that and take that into consideration with any funding decisions made tonight because really what we would be committing with with any additional funding as well as the existing $50,000 that we've used for the program would draw on general fund reserves. And so I I I just wanted to to make sure that that was that was a clear point. I I did present a couple of options for commission discussion, and I'm certainly happy to review those options. But Mayor, I I might turn to you and and see if now might be a good time to receive some comments from I don't see John Crable on the call, but maybe Steve Ozark to talk a little bit about the program experience from our the perspective of our volunteer team.
Hi, Steve Ozark, Coalition for Homeless Concerns Secretary, longtime advocate. We're trying to get John in. He's working now at the Days Inn. So I just prepared what's about three minutes of of an overview on the program. And I want to thank everyone who's been involved in this Lawrence Winter Shelter. The pandemic's definitely added some big challenges from what we did last year. It's the second year in a row we've had a winter shelter in quite a while. And my greatest hope would be that we would all work together to study and adopt the Bill for Zero to end homelessness here, as has been done in Rockford, Illinois, and Bergen County, New Jersey, and other cities that have enacted the Bill for Zero model. The county has that program and is studying that now. The commissioners, I'd ask that you each commit tonight that your support for a winter shelter for all of our Douglas County citizens who are following our house rules that we have, that the community has your commitment that these citizens will have shelter on freezing nights throughout this winter season. It's not been easy for any of us, but it's been essential that some of the 101 unique people we've served and I've read about that's in Leavenworth and Kansas City this winter, so we should take stock that we don't have that here because of the good and hard work that's been done through the holidays by so many people. I did get a message today at 4 o'clock about the budget proposal that you have. And and I just want to share that this is unfortunately not enough to to meet the need that we see happening, some 60 to 70 more nights. If the freezing temperatures continue, we've had no break at all with freezing temperatures every night so far. We we proposed $300,000 plus the cost of hired security to get through at the current budget spend. And that has taken more than 1,000 hours of volunteer hours. And we've really invested too many of those hours worrying about making the budget. So underfunding the effort puts us in long meetings of of struggling of how we're going to cope with this without having the funding. And again, I say up to 300,000 because I have some proposals here that how we could save some money. For example, our Super 8 rate at $70 per night, if you go on your phone and you look at January, February rates, they're between $46 to $56, which is 14 to $24 less than the cities being caused to pay. So we could save $14,000 to $21,600 upcoming off the rack rate. And at a volume buy, I think we have some negotiating power below that for the next contract. The other item I I'd really suggest is that the new contract wouldn't offer the Days Inn, our primary hotel, where Ken and Annie have been terrific partners. But we don't, we can't afford to offer them 21 rooms on nights when it's above 40 degrees. There's no reason to pay $987 a night when we'll be closed because we're hoping some night it's going to be above 40 degrees. Certainly more in March as we get through the year, but last year we had a lot of warmer weather in January, February. That hasn't been the case. It's really good to hear that meetings took place yesterday. I heard about that the Econo Lodge and that those rooms becoming available to our people. And we would invite and appreciate if our community service providers could come to the Days Inn at 5:45. We do intake at 6 to 8, and there's a line of these folks that you can work with and identify and help us to serve them. And I want everybody to know that we are gathering data on on those folks to help if that can be of help to the service providers. And regarding the security issue, I did talk to Zach, who owns Millspec, and he's working on a proposed rate. It looks like it might cost $4 or $5 a room night, unless I can butter him up with his good name going on this project to do the hours that John Crable and Tony Kaufman, our two co-coordinators, are requesting for security. You know, we update every day in the morning when those guys get off off the site, and it's just escalating in in a hotel environment in a pandemic where they have external doors. We just want to offset that with good onsite security that could work in tandem with the police. It's, you know, a a small percentage of our population that we're concerned about, mostly concerned about the cars coming up to the rooms during the middle of the night. These people concern us. Nobody wants to approach them. Something's going on that shouldn't be going on. It's against our rules, and we need greater intervention. We're not having volunteers in those hours because we don't feel that's safe for anyone. It's really not safe for John and Tony either. So the security issue, if John can't come come on, I think he would talk to you from his firsthand experience. I've just been there early on. I have a health condition that I can't serve because of the COVID, but Kenny and Annie have been great. Derek and Mitch have been on on the spot all the holidays, and all these volunteers have really done a great job. It is expensive. And I hope we don't do this next year. I hope we build for zero because there really is communities that we can talk to that have figured out working collaboratively to not spend this kind of money to keep people from freezing and and getting frostbite and and exposure. So I'll be glad to answer any questions on John's behalf because I've heard many things. And I'll otherwise I'll dart away to try to get him on the horn if he's not with us yet.
Assistant City Manager Brandon McGuire. Thanks, Steve. I'll I'll wrap up the presentation comments, and then we'll turn it back to you, Mayor, and the commission for for discussion, if that's okay. So as Steve expressed, we certainly hope to not be be doing a non-congregate shelter next winter. This program definitely seems to be unique to the pandemic experience. And I know that many, many communities, and even at the state level across the country, governments are 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 taking similar sort of approaches to providing winter shelter and even on ongoing shelter services in a non-congregate environment as we continue to face the pandemic. So we've we've clearly got an enduring pandemic here and a long cold winter ahead. I I I would point to the the funding options and and suggest that if the commission is interested in funding the program with additional resources, that we at least make a commitment to to try to get through the months of January and February at the rate that we're going now with the budget, which we think could fluctuate down, hopefully not up, but certainly down as we fill up the the Econo Lodge Shelter. We, you know, we're spending at $25,000 a week currently, so our budget recommendation to get through February is based on around a $20 to $25,000 a week or, you know, a week expenditure rate. And so the the proposal for for a funded, you know, continued funding is an additional $200,000 to get us through roughly the next eight weeks of providing a program. And so that's that's the And so that's the first option for discussion. And then there are a couple other options that we can provide more feedback on if the commission would like. And so that wraps it for the staff presentation. We've tried to give you as much information as we've been able to gather over a very fast and furious two weeks of standing this program up and running it. I wish we had more data to go off of and some better analysis to present and visuals, but this is where we're at for this evening.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you, Brandon, and Derek and Steve for those comments. Commissioners, do you have questions before then we'll have a public comment and bring it back for discussion, but questions?
Yeah, Commissioner Larson, I got a couple of questions. Can somebody tell me how many rooms we have at the Super Eight that we could, that's available to us every night? Is it a consistent amount or is it just depends on what they have available?
There's more at the Super Eight than we need, Commissioner Larson. They have 55 rooms at the Days Inn, and Ken talked about offering more rooms to us. They, originally, the proposal was for 40, but they've been very gracious to up that. And they're considering, I think they talked to Mitch as well, Mitch Young at the city, and are considering just offering the 55 rooms to us when we need them. But the inventory at Super Eight, it doesn't, I don't believe it supersedes or is greater than 55 rooms. I'm not sure. But we're using that as overflow because its location across the street makes it somewhat doable, but we have no coverage there of staffing coordinators. And again, our security would run between the two buildings and work it all night. But I don't know to answer what their total inventory, but we have more than we need.
Yeah, Steve, I'm sorry. I meant the Days Inn. I'm sorry, Commissioner Larson here.
55, Steve Ozark, yeah, 55 rooms is their total capacity. And we've used, I think, up to 52.
Okay.
And Ken is open to the idea. The thing is, we won't use it when it's warm. Again, we don't want to make this anything more than a warming environment. And it'll keep our problems down, as we've been advised by Christie Hill, who did it last year, is the short hours, cold nights only, you know, keep the cost down, is to only be open when it's below 40-degree lows.
Thank you, Commissioner Larson. And so what about the damages that we are incurring that's eaten up 26% of the budget? What's being done to mitigate that? Or, I mean, how are those, how's that being handled?
Derek may know most about. I think the largest incident was the person that had a psychotic break. And, I mean, I heard that the desk was in 12 pieces. It wasn't like an intentional destruction, but that's gone on too. I've heard about cell phones down the toilet and flushing. The flooded room got caught before it got too far, so it was just in the bathroom. What the co-coordinators describe is they deal with people on an individual basis. And if they see it as malfeasance and destruction, they're kicked out. But we have to realize a lot of these people function in a very different world. And there's a whole lot of mental illness that is going on to where their discretion of how to handle each individual is based on vulnerability too. I mean, I tell on John now. He's paid for rooms during the day because he felt people were too weak to go out. And so he paid for the rooms so they could stay during the daytime. It's a unique population that we address, so it's a by-case basis. But again, the security would do a lot for that, the presence of a constant security officer. And in talking to Zach at MilSpec, I loved what he was saying, how they deal with people as they go up to them and say, hey, what's your name? They're taking down their license plate, and they just break these things up. I mean, they're trained to do these kind of interventions near law enforcement. And they actually do more than just observe and report. They also do investigation. And MilSpec actually is licensed and has protection for us where they can get back them from our Lawrence Police Department if something were to go. I think by having that presence, there'd be a lot less issues of destruction. We all agree with that. That would reduce that wasted money.
Commissioner Larson, does staff have anything to say about that? That's what I was really asking.
I'm Derek Brach, Director of Parks Recreation. I call daily and talk with John Crable about the days, the previous night's budget, the damages. In a lot of cases at the Super Eight, they have a fine if you smoke in a room. It's $250 a night. So we address, try to address the smokers and not use the smokers in that hotel. Days Inn has been more accommodating with that. We're also addressing when there is problems, banning not only the people that are out for that night, but they can't come back. Like Steve had mentioned, everything from, it could have been flooded carpet to a lot of jam toilets. But we try to address that. The same thing with reviewing the budget. I review the budget daily from the previous night with the volunteer to talk about how can we increase maximizing room capability. So couples are put in there first. He tries to bond the couples, could be friends that are already dragging around together. So we try to maximize rooms the best as we possibly can and to keep the budget down. In some cases, that's not possible.
This is Assistant City Manager Brandon McGuire. I might add just a couple comments. It may seem obvious, but for, you know, the sake of putting it out there, a non-congregate shelter where individual guests or, you know, couples or families have their own room, it's a much different environment than a congregate shelter where, you know, you have volunteer staff who have eyes on everybody all night long. And so it, you know, we did anticipate damages going into the project. In fact, we set aside several thousand dollars, more than $5,000 originally for damages. And I think the high level of utilization of the program, especially going to an overflow site, that is virtually unsupervised, the damages sort of escalate with the demand or the consumption level of the program. And so I'm not sure we anticipated serving 107, 108, 109 people, even though we knew that there was a great need out there. That's a lot of people in very vulnerable situations and circumstances and varying capability of staying by themselves completely unsupervised in a room.
Commissioner Larson, thank you, Brandon and Derek. Steve?
I think I have other questions before we open it up to public comment and then comment ourself. Okay, we'll go ahead and open it up to public comment. If you're interested in speaking, please raise your hand, using the raise the hand feature or wave, and Sherry will get you on the list, and you'll have three minutes.
Rose Schmidt, please state your name, unmute, state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Rose Schmidt, and I was originally planning to read a statement that the commissioners all received earlier today from the co-president of Justice Matters, Deacon Godsey. And a lot of what that included was addressed by Steve Ozark, so I don't plan to do that. But I hope you all do get a chance to look at that. The main thing I want to say is how appreciative we are about the leadership that the commissioners have shown. This all happened very quickly and wasn't as well planned, I think, as we all would have liked. But when it got as cold as it did, as quickly as it did, I really appreciate, we really appreciate how quickly we were able to respond to the urgent need. And I would also like to say that we would very much support continuing the funding so that we can complete the winter and hopefully have better options by next year. And I just want to say that we are extremely thankful that we live in a city that has a heart and is able to prioritize humanity over property. Property is important, and that's certainly added to the expense of this. But the fact that we've kept everyone safe is something I think we, as a city, can take great pride in. So I, like others, would encourage the continued funding for this project and refer you to the email from Deacon Godsey, Reverend Deacon Godsey. Thank you.
Sherilyn Wells, please state your name. You'll have three minutes.
This is Mayor Finkel. Sherrilyn, if you're trying to speak, we can't hear you. You're still on mute, but if not, Sherry, maybe go to the next person. We'll come back to Sherilyn.
Hello. I hope that you're able to continue the funding. I did notice there were two people froze to death in Kansas City, so it is a real need. And when I volunteered on Christmas Day, people seemed extremely appreciative for the program, and I hope that you're able to continue with it. Thank you very much. And thank you, Lawrence, for being a city with heart. Thank you.
Caitlin McDermid, please state your name. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Caitlin McDermid. Hello, commissioners. I've been volunteering as the volunteer coordinator for the emergency winter shelter this year. I certainly want to thank everybody that's been involved, all the people at the city who's been working alongside our volunteers. I've already sent you my detailed comments in writing, so my comments tonight will be brief. On the backs of a few good-hearted volunteers in our community, we protected many, many people every night from the elements. We have greatly saved lives and limbs. You all approved funding for the pilot, and now we've come back to you with clear needs expressed for this program to continue successfully. I urge you to listen and support those needs. Support John and Tony, who have worked every day onsite as coordinators. Support the rest of the volunteers doing the best that we can do, and support the over 100 people we are sheltering every night. We need funding, expanded funding, and we need security to keep everyone safe. Thank you for doing your part. I know you'll do the right thing. Good night.
This is Sherry Redeman, City Clerk. If anyone else would like to speak, please raise your hand. Renee Cool, please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, guys. I just want to express my concern about what I'm hearing about this program. For comparison, I've been running a hotel shelter for 10 months, and the amount of funds we've spent on damages in that time period is $850. And we have not, in that entire time, asked for police to come out and monitor and interact with people with severe persistent mental illness. Police are not social workers, and they have no business interfacing with people who are ill and have behavioral health disorder. And I'm extremely concerned that that's the strategy that's being presented here. It's upsetting for me. And I'm concerned about how this program is growing. I'm not hearing anything about diversion. I'm not hearing, are we screening people? Are we asking them if they're actually homeless? Are we mixing people who are criminals, who are seeking a place to hide away and engage in drug deals on the parking lot, and putting them in proximity to people who are in recovery from substance use disorder, who are extremely sick and vulnerable, who are vulnerable to being sex trafficked? This is not going well. And I appreciate that the people here are well-intentioned, but the social work that I do keeps people safe. And safety is non-negotiable when you work with vulnerable people. So you're asking for $300,000? That's my entire budget for the entire year. If the general funds is going to open up to that degree, it needs to be for housing because that's where we can ensure that people are safe. And I just can't support, after what I've heard this evening, that kind of money being sunk into this project.
We have Hamida, and I apologize if I'm not saying that correctly, but you have three minutes.
Thank you. Hamida is my wife. I'm Hussein Grame. Mayor Finkel, commissioners, thanks for what you have done, and thanks everybody else for what they have done so far. I do not wish what I do not want for myself or others. I think we should provide that shelters to those people that are less fortunate. But at the same time, even though everybody did a very good job, I think we can better negotiate the rates on the hotels and also right away ask the people who make the damage because $13,000 in damages can provide shelters to so many other people. We should basically kick them out right away and not let them in anymore. Thanks again. Appreciate.
Megan Stuke, you have three minutes. Please state your name.
Megan, we can't hear you.
Got it. Sorry. I'm Megan Stukey. I'm the executive director at the Willow Domestic Violence Center. I just wanted to add a little perspective. At the Willow, we have 32 employees, 23 of which are direct service staff who are well-trained, trauma-informed, trained, most of them with bachelor's and master's degrees and years of experience. It costs us $80,000 a month to maintain that staff at a pretty low cost staffing rate, really. You know, whatever happens going forward, we certainly don't want anyone dying in the cold. We're in the business of providing safety and shelter. That's our goal. But I'm disappointed in sort of the last-minute slap-dashness of this and the idea that, you know, for example, the Willow receives almost no city and county funding. And were we able, along with Renee's staff and shelter, to prepare properly and have the right staff and the right housing resources, we could avoid these things and do such a better, safer job for people who have real needs and not be kind of putting this money in a place that's not going to serve any long-term effect? So, you know, whatever has to happen to keep people safe for the rest of the year, I understand, but I also don't think this is safe in many ways. And it's a frustrating thing to watch from the people who are doing professional work in this area to see that. I mean, when you say $300,000, I have a $2 million a year budget. That's a huge fraction of what I do my year's work on. It's a, it's a, it's a really staggering number. And we send people to the O'Connell Lodge. Our residents are staying at the O'Connell Lodge through the LCS project. We don't have problems because we know how to work with people and we have the staffing that's prepared for this. We would like to be prepared to do this better. We would like to put people into housing immediately. We're very good at it. We did it when the pandemic began. We can do it again. We can put more people into more stable housing. With $200,000 or $300,000, we can do a tremendous amount of work in a very short time. So that's all. Thank you.
Chris Flowers.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers, and I just wanted to comment on, I think Renee's, what she was talking about. Because when I first moved here, I worked at the Salvation Army Shelter when it was open. And we did have a problem where there, there were drug dealers at the shelter. And I think, I mean, I'm not an expert, but I think it was like, they were also homeless, but they were kind of like the lackeys for a bigger drug dealer. And it was a sad story because there was a guy there and he wasn't into drugs. And then he ended up committing, like trying to rob someone because he ended up getting addicted to drugs. And it's because he was hanging out with the guy who was dealing. So, I mean, so it is a legitimate concern. And I also, I don't want people freezing to death. But it seems like a lot of money. It just seems like a pickle. But at the same time, I'm just wondering if there's any merit to the, I believe, in the past about Eric's request for money just for tents and stuff. I don't know. I mean, we need to do something, like even, even drug, people who have addiction problems and maybe they are dealing, they don't deserve to freeze to death either. Like, maybe there's some way we can just separate all the drug people into one place. I don't know. But, I mean, no one deserves to freeze to death, but at the same time, we still need to make sure those that are vulnerable to addiction issues aren't being exploited. It's a mess. So just wanted to share that. Thank you.
This is Sheri Redeman, City Clerk. Mayor, there, there is no one else who's indicated they want to, oh, I'm sorry, we do have one individual who's raising their hand. Matthew Falk, please go ahead.
Yeah, Matthew Falk, Housing Project Manager with PerpNash. I think one thing to keep in mind with this is that a large amount of, or a large number of the folks that we're serving here are, for lack of a better term in traditional language, people that we would the hardest to serve. So, for example, when my team makes a referral to the Lawrence Community Shelters Hotel Program, a lot of these people are folks we are not going to refer there because we know that there are problems. And this is an effort to just simply provide shelter without any attempts to provide the services that really are required. And I agree with Renee. I agree with Megan. I agree with Megan in the sense that, you know, there's, there's a whole lot that should be in place to provide a super robust program. But that also includes spending a lot more money, right? As Megan said, $80,000 a month for staffing. That's not the budget that was included here. And, and it was kind of a, you know, a quick process to put this together. I understand that. COVID has played havoc with our ability to provide this kind of, you know, provide shelter for our community. The traditional agencies that would have the staffing and would have the training are not able to do that. So I think the challenge is that, that we're dealing with those people who are left, who were not able to serve in those other, in those other programs and who have major challenges. And so when we move forward, I think it's important to consider how we continue to structure this, that these are folks that need a lot of help and a lot of service. And that, that's the challenge. It's not that somehow, they're doing the best that they can with what they got. If we want to be more robust, we have to spend the money. I don't have the staff. I don't have the staff to be there. I've got four outreach workers. And we're already, and we're inundated already. So.
Sorry, I believe we were muted. This is Sheri Redeman, City Clerk. Steve Ozark, you may go ahead. You had a statement to read, I believe.
Let me pull that back up. Thank you. This is from John Crable. He's one of the two co-coordinators, so I'm just reading this because he's, he's busy over there, can't break away to join us. My name is John Crable, and I currently serve as one of the co-coordinators alongside Tony Kaufman of the Winter Emergency Shelter. Let me start by sharing that I've personally been onsite either morning, evening, or both, every day since the program began, the evening of December 23rd, and has continued to date. In that period of time, we've seen a number grow from 35 the first night to as high as 110. The daily average over the last week is 98 guests being placed in approximately 68 rooms. When we started this program, I personally had but one priority, and that was to ensure that every person that came to us every evening was given the opportunity of a place to stay out of the cold temperatures and elements. After 13 nights of operating this shelter, with all the variations and challenges that have persisted, I will undoubtedly continue to persist. I can tell you tonight that my priority list has changed. We'll continue to have the same heart for their health and well-being and the same passion for this endeavor. It is without reservation that I share with you now my number one priority. By far, my greatest concern is the safety of our volunteers and the safety of the staff at the two hotels. Time here tonight will not permit me to share all the experiences that I or Tony have had, nor the things that we've witnessed. So I ask you to trust me when I tell you that security for some of these few guests that are causing the problems at the front lines is a risk, and it's becoming a greater risk each night. We obviously want the program to continue, and for all those who desperately need this, no matter how there, how many there are on a give a night, we want to see it fully funded until there's no more nights when the temperature is an issue. As the one that will be responsible to execute the program every day and under the circumstances that will remain as a hotel setting, I'm imploring you to incorporate an adequate, adequate level of security for our volunteers. Tony and I included in that, and for the owners and staff at the hotel in question. While we all hope that there will never be an issue that could potentially bring harm, physical harm, our experience thus far would suggest it's no longer a matter of if, but when, if we don't provide proper security. Thank you, John Crable.
This is Sheri Redeman, City Clerk. If there's anyone else who would like to speak to this item, please do so by raising your hand. Mayor Sheri Redeman, City Clerk. No one else has indicated they wish to speak to this item.
Mayor Finkeldai, thank you. We'll bring you back to the commission. You know, and I guess I will start, I will say a couple of things. You know, I was involved last year in the, in the winter shelter. And, you know, we, we, in a congregate setting, in the, in the basement of a church or two churches, we'd have 45 or so people. And we had no security risks. We had no damage. We had no real issues to speak of. You know, one of the lessons, I think, you know, the winter shelter folks have learned this year, and many of them are the same volunteers, with the same people, that when you, because of COVID, you put them in separate rooms and you let them stand behind a locked door by themselves, things happen that wouldn't happen in a congregate setting. And, you know, we did the whole program last year on volunteer funds, volunteers and volunteer funds. And I think Brandon said this earlier, Steve said this earlier. I would, I mean, you know, absent COVID, we would never be doing it this way, you know? Absent COVID, we would never be, be doing this. We would, one, we'd have more availability and maybe less homeless, but also in some of our current shelters, if at all, we'd be doing a winter shelter in a congregate location at little or no expense. And so, you know, as Brandon laid out in his, his options, you know, I mean, one of these concerns, you can, you can allay some of these concerns by going back to a congregate setting. If you could get volunteers and/or you're willing to put these people in a COVID risk and, and, and put those folks, of course, he'd be against the health order. We're going to do it, but, you know, speaking, you know, hypothetically, that would be an option. But the health order wouldn't allow us to do it, nor should we do that. And so then I, I think we are left with, as several people said, including Matthew Falk, a very tricky situation. I mean, I understand what Renee is saying. I certainly understand what Megan is saying. But I also hear what Matthew is saying, that these are difficult folks to serve. And one option is just to stop spending the money and let them, you know, fend for themselves. Or in this COVID year, do we do something different? And I will also say that, you know, some of our other providers in this COVID year have, have got extra funds to do extra things because their need is there. And so it is not a year in which only one entity is receiving extra funding. Many entities are receiving extra funding that they normally don't receive because of COVID, to operate under COVID. So I certainly do not see this as, and I'm going to, as you probably won't surprise you, I'm going to support some additional funding for this. But it, but I would not say that it is because, you know, I think it is something we should do in the future, and nor do I think it is a reflection of the best way to do it. But it's, we were in a COVID situation, and it's a, we find ourselves in a situation where we would never have a Woody Park and put 40 people in a park. No one, no one predicted that last January, and spending money on that, that is because of COVID. We're spending extra money because of the need, and I see this along that same line. I, I know that Brandon, you know, this is a function that maybe could have been funded had we predicted it in time. Who knows if you'll ever be funded. It might be the general fund. But maybe some funds later we can recoup. Not going to count on that, but I certainly think it's possible. These are the sorts of things that could be funded, like Woody Park and like the O'Connell Lodge. But obviously, that, that funding is passed, and now we're at this situation. Do we stop the program or do we continue to move it forward? You know, I think what I've been hearing is, we've definitely had some growing pains, and we definitely have seen, you know, some damages that we don't need. As Hussein said, you know, any damage we can stop funds a lot of additional rooms. And I know that they're working on that, and I believe John Crable when he says he's going to do that. So, you know, it, it's not perfect, but I, I think the alternative is unacceptable. So, you know, I appreciate what, you know, Brandon has done. Brandon was supposedly taking the week of, after Christmas off. But I know that he was talking to Derek and Ethos, and I know Derek and Mitch have been working every day. I don't know how many times I've said this about Derek, but if Derek ever thought this is what he'd be doing when he accepted the job as Director of Parks and Rec, probably having some fun with a donation policy was a lot of fun compared to this. You know, but he and Mitch have, you know, been doing work on that. And so, I mean, I appreciate all the staff, and, and it's, it's fall from perfect. And every person we can get out of that program and get to the O'Connell Lodge, we need to. Every person we can get out of that and into the Willow, we need to. Anyone that can go to Woody Park, we need to. You know, anyone we can get out of this program, I think everyone agrees we need to as rapidly as possible. One, because those programs are better than this program. Two, because it would save us costs here. And that includes getting some of the construction done at the community shelter and hopefully getting some more people into the community shelter when that can, much needed and appropriate construction is done. So there's lots and lots of moving parts. Lots and lots of moving parts, lots of improvements to be made. But I think it's something we, we need to go forward with because the alternative is, I don't think is acceptable.
This is Commissioner Ananda. I think that seems like everyone is admitting that we're not really addressing the problem of houselessness through this program. I think that's fairly object, obvious. It's a really expensive Band-Aid that we're putting on a gaping wound with no triage, essentially. I think that, you know, I don't work in the field of houselessness, but I do work in the field of sexual assault and intimate partner violence and have for more than a decade. And the first thing that I think about with this scenario or any similar scenario, including congregate sheltering, sheltering, is the fact that women and female identifying individuals are at far, far greater risk of experiencing rape, of experiencing intimate partner violence, of being trafficked or recruited to trafficking. It's super concerning, as both Renee and Megan pointed out, that there isn't kind of a screening happening when, when they're talking about like bonded couples going in. The scenario around that can look very different, depending on whose perspective you're hearing and the experience of that individual when that door is shut. I think that shelters for a long time, particularly domestic violence shelters, have gotten very good at identifying human trafficking recruiters who might put themselves in those shelters or in that space in order to engage in recruitment around trafficking or dealers of whatever, whatever drug is accessible for those folks. Those are huge concerns when there isn't also social work occurring when we're not moving toward housing. That, that is painful for me to accept. It's also not okay for people to freeze to death. And I think Chris Flowers put it as a pickle, understatement perhaps of the year so far, but I will use that language. People do go to school for social work for a really long time to be able to deal with understanding the complex nature of the experiences that these folks are having because they aren't simple. And they aren't. Volunteers don't necessarily have the capacity to, to deal with these issues, to deal with them effectively, to deal with them in a way that doesn't create a criminal justice-based response to the concerns and issues that are occurring. So I think that I'm, I'm, I'm going to say that I will support that additional funding, but I want alternatives. I don't want this to be like, okay, we are done. We have the funding. This is what we are doing. I know that we aren't going to be experts on a temporary problem. And this is a temporary solution to a problem based on a whole other problem that we're experiencing through the pandemic. But this isn't ideal. I think that it is probably the most responsible thing we can do right now, but I don't feel like it's the most responsible thing that we can do. So I want to hear ideas. I want to hear collaboration with our other organizations. And I know that they're all at capacity as well, you know, to call on Renee and Megan to address this, this issue when they are already dealing with the capacity that they have in their, in their space. That's a big ask. And so I'm not going to make it, but I do, I do want us to do better and I expect us to do better, frankly.
Vice Mayor Shipley, I share a lot of Commissioner Ananda's concerns. I won't restate them. When I read the MOU, for example, that we have this memorandum of understanding. It's clear that even some of those basic things aren't happening, like the non-smoking and the charge for the non-smoking. That's all laid out here. As much as my heart bleeds. I have a hard time asking my city manager to sign something that the first version. Already some of the things weren't adhered to. So by way of agreeing, I think with Commissioner Ananda. I need some guarantees. I need some. Plans. I need some. A lot, a lot more clarity. And I guess maybe also in this. Space, I'd hate to, but I will ask Commissioner Ananda's. Thoughts on this is security aspect, the, the. CHC asking for either private security or. Occasional police presence.
This is Commissioner Ananda. I think that when we implement effective screening and we have professionals engaging in that work. Then that reduces the perception of need for any kind of security. And I think that. To maintain consistency, because it's really important to me. Having law enforcement presence is not going to. What is the word I'm looking for? Deescalate. That situation as much as preventative screening would do.
Commissioner Larson, I don't know if I can add much to what's been said already. It seems like this is a situation. Where. You know, we're in such an immediate need and. The idea of totally switching gears at this point in time, although financially. There could be some benefit, but at the same time, I don't know how long it would take to announce a place. I'm really concerned about the damages situation. I just. And, and I think there's a safety issue there, obviously. They've talked about that pretty significantly. I don't know, you know, I'm not a social worker or a professional in that area, so. I don't know how that should be handled. I don't have an idea on that. I, I just know that's not acceptable for somebody to freeze at night at this point in time. I mean, that's the, that's what I keep coming back to. But there's also, it seems to be a need to definitely take a look at. The money is being spent, especially on the damages aspect of it. Whether or not anything could be done to mitigate some of that, to put that money more towards room nights because. The about fourteen thousand dollars that was spent in damages, that's almost three hundred rooms nights. That's quite a bit. It seems like. So, you know, I'll support this with hesitation. But. You know, I think it's the only way for, that I can see going forward to actually make sure we don't have folks freezing at night.
Vice Mayor Shipley, Mayor, I, I want to clarify what you're, what you're suggesting. Are you suggesting two hundred thousand dollars? Out of the general fund? That's the first thing. And then before we move on to that, I do want to say. I heard other organizations in town. Potentially with more qualified people saying what they could do. Or could have done with the same amount of money. So before we just. Say yeses, I want to clarify, there's not an alternative that we have not identified here.
Mayor Finkel, Brandon, maybe I could ask you. When, when we did this originally, did you talk to different organizations about running this particular program or what was the response you received?
Assistant City Manager Brandon Maguire. Yeah, Mayor, thanks for the question and thanks, Vice Mayor Shipley. We, I, I do want to point out. And, and it's been, it's been sort of said on the call, but you know, the, the volunteer group. Steve and John and, and everybody else, you know, they're not, they're not professionals. They're not. Social workers, case managers. They don't have necessarily background in operating emergency shelters. We did go originally to. The community shelter and expanded that conversation to some of our other agencies that we know. Have, have at least a toe in the sheltering business. Willow, Family Promise, and even, even Burton Nash. And invited Loring Henderson with, with Dare Drop-In Center as well. People who work, you know, who work every day in, in this field and asked them. What, you know, what the capacity is, because I, I think we all kind of know when you work in social services. Free money may not always, free money may not always be. Be a, a benefit and may sometimes create more trouble than, than, than is manageable. And so. The, the providers are maxed out. That's, I think that that's a fair statement on behalf of the providers on the call and, and those who aren't. And, and please feel free to correct me if that's not, but I do believe that's a fair statement. Based on the conversation we had with them and then, you know, throughout, throughout the pandemic, looking back, they're maxed out. And even if we could funnel money towards them, I'm not sure that they can scale up fast enough. With professional, qualified, trained staff and get them on an overnight winter shelter program. We could make investments in, in the long game. In, in, in rapid rehousing and housing navigation, which will. Mitigate and, and, and really make inroads, you know, substantial inroads to reduce the need next winter. But are we going to be able to take two hundred thousand dollars and put people in apartments by tomorrow night? It's likely not going to happen. So in, investing in our partner agency, some of our other community agencies. It's probably going to be more of a longer term investment.
This is Commissioner Ananda. I, I think that, that one way to look at this as well as we're looking at. You know, who, whose hands these lives are in. What is, what is the way, we know, we can say, we've all said, what is unacceptable? There, there are things in addition to freezing to death that are unacceptable to me. And that is putting someone in a position to be raped, to experience intimate partner violence within that space that we have provided for them. To engage that violence. So I think that, and, and there are a multitude of other, of other experiences that someone can have that have just as impactful lifelong. Implications for every person experiencing that. And so, you know, I, I know that, that. These are very well-intentioned volunteers. Lives are in their hands and that's serious. And so I, I, I don't think I can emphasize that enough. In fact, I've probably emphasized it too much. I do see that Megan Stuckey has her hand raised and Mayor, I would, I would request that we hear from her in regard to this because this is the work that she does.
Absolutely.
So I just wanted to respond to a couple of things. Sorry. I didn't know before the commission meeting where the fifty thousand was allocated. That any of this was on the table and maybe that's my fault, but. That was not a conversation I was engaged in. And you're right, we're here. It's a moment now where, you know, it's like, well, what can we do literally today? I, I guess my, and, and I know we have to make a decision today about what to do for today. But I, I think we could have predicted cold weather. We knew cold weather was coming in the pandemic. So there's a real frustration. You're right, we, I can't upscale, I can't add trained staff overnight and I can't. Sort of all of a sudden put people in an apartment overnight, but, but I could have. And I, I think that's the frustration and that's the thing I just really want to be heard about is that Renee could have, I could have. You know, with rapid rehousing dollars, we can do a lot of things pretty dang quickly. And, and the conversation didn't happen until the very last minute, which is why we're here. And so, you know, I, I know I'm. Kind of preaching about a thing that's too late, too little, too late, but. I, I can't express enough that this is not a safe thing. And those of us who are, who are in the building, in the business of doing safety. And shelter and protection for vulnerable people are sick about this. And. You've really put us in a position of. Of our own advocates going to risk because we're trying to help these people in the ways that we can. There are people at these shelters confidential, confidentiality has been violated already by volunteers who are well-meaning, but not trained. Major violations of their rights have already happened that put them at risk. This is just really not a safe situation. And I think. Commissioner Ananda made a really good point that we, we don't really trade one. Element of non-safety for another. That's just not how we do business when we're doing this work and, and we really need to have people who know how to do it. I, I suppose you have to do something now. We're in this situation, so. You know, I, I just, I just can't express my frustration enough that this is, that this is the situation. It's really regrettable. So thank you for hearing me out. And, you know, in the future. I am here for every meeting you want and I will come every week and I will be involved in any conversation that is. Being had, hopefully a year in advance, six months, nine months, whatever it takes. We're here for it. And as Renee, I mean, we, we'll turn it around pretty quick. So anyway, thank you.
Mayor Finkel, Renee, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that we never had a conversation about three hundred thousand dollars. We had a conversation about what we could do in a week with fifty thousand dollars. And if you asked me in October, what I could do with three hundred thousand dollars. I could have had most of these people housed. So, and. I hear what people are saying about people's SPMI. Those folks can come to the O'Connor Lodge. They can come to LCS. We're prepared to shelter them. But if this is how you guys want to do business around homelessness is like. I didn't know I could just come to a meeting and ask for three hundred thousand dollars. And if I, if I had known that that was the case, I would ask for, for housing. And we have a grants process. That's how we allocated CARES money is through a ranked scored objective grants process. And you have people coming to you who are spending twenty-six percent of the money that you've given them on damages. And then you're just opening up more funds for them. I don't think that that makes any sense. And I think that the day that the shelter shuts down. The people who are sheltered there are still at risk of dying. Maybe they won't freeze to death. But they're still at risk of dying. So I, I just, I, this conversation is deeply upsetting to me. And I agree, like people need somewhere to be inside, but we can't have this conversation January fifth. So that's my last comment on this.
Let me, oh Renee, I wanted to follow up with you. I guess. When the request was for fifty-one rooms at the O'Connor Lodge. Where, where do we come up with fifty-one? I mean, I wasn't, no one came and asked us about why fifty-one rooms? Why not seventy-five rooms? Why not two hotels? Where did the fifty-one rooms come from? And did, was there a thought that that would handle what we needed or was that? Were you told you have so much money to work with or how, how was that?
Yes, we went through a bid process. We had a grant amount. And then we had a bid for hotels. And that was what was allowable and allocable with that amount of money.
Thank you. Other comments? Questions?
Mr. Mayor, may I say something?
One second, only if we have a question for you, Mr. Jami, hold on. Not at the moment. Does, do any of the commissioners have? Comments?
This is Commissioner Ananda. I think that. I think that I would. I'm definitely hearing that, that we need to do something. And that for the foreseeable, very near future, this is what we continue doing. I think that I would stand by rather than allocating a lump sum. That we continue to process the possibility of alternatives. And look for momentum around that. So if there is a way to. Contingently fund for, you know, as long as we need to, until we have an alternative. I would prefer. Taking that next step to saying, here is all that at once. Go forth and do as you have done.
Mayor, Commissioner Shipley, Vice, sorry, Mayor Shipley. Yeah, maybe something along those lines. Could we, I hear Brandon saying twenty-five thousand dollars a week. Let's say that out loud one more time. Twenty-five thousand dollars a week. Can we? Can we? Do a week and. Look at that, look, look at larger amounts being asked of us, perhaps of. Anyone who can come to us, who can. Do this safely or who did not, for whatever reasons, get the chance to offer their services. Being unaware that. This kind of money was on the offer.
I think. I, I don't think there's much disagreement. That. We are open to alternatives. I mean, you know, if, if. You know, there's some rooms left at the O'Connor Lodge. You know, you know, obviously it takes time to do it right, to ramp those up. What impact would that have? If LCS gets to a place where they can take some of these people, I'm, I'm happy to move the funding to them. If, if it helps them to more rapidly house people at the community shelter. Once the construction's done, I know they have issues. I mean, I, I think, I mean, I think no one working at the winter shelter wants anyone at the winter shelter. I mean. They would love to be out of a job. We would love to have no one sheltered there. I mean, I do. Acknowledge Matthew's point, which I'm not sure that. You know, that some of these people will be acceptable or be accepted into programs, certain programs. And so that, that, you know. Will we be able to, to come up with ways to house a hundred and one people in the next sixty days? For two hundred thousand dollars? You know, I'm, I'm all open for alternatives. So I certainly would be open to, to this idea that. You know, of course, the amount of money on the winter shelter is up to an amount and that if, if that money can be better used to place these. People other places that we're, we're open to that. I mean, I certainly would be. How we do that in a motion. How we do that in a motion tonight, how we, um, make that happen? I, I mean, I'm, I'm open to suggestions from Brandon on that. But I, I would be, I think everyone would be more than happy to have these people in a safer, better environment. City Manager Owens, did you have something to say? I saw you turn your camera on.
Well, this is City Manager Craig Owens. I, I'm just ready to enter the discussion when we start to get into some options to move forward. Uh, Brandon probably is more capable, but, um, I think given general discretion of a, a general budget amount for the next month, uh, or maybe beyond that, uh, would, would help us. And then, uh, we will engage robustly with the partners that are, uh, that are, are already, obviously have an expertise and, and are interested and have been working in this space. So I, I think, you know, we, we've been scrambling, obviously, for quite a while and everybody understands that. And we also, like most of the volunteers that are operating here, do not have the, the skillset or capacity in this space. Uh, so we, we are, um, dependent on, as a community, on our partners and the people that are, are, are trying to figure this out. And we have some expertise and we need to put those all together. And, uh, if, if we bring to the table financial resources, which that's basically our role, um, you know, on behalf of the taxpayers, we can do that. And I think that's really what we're being asked to do. And I, I do, I would, um, say if you give staff the discretion, uh, by giving us a, a general allowance that you're comfortable with, where there's the 200,000 or more, uh, during this period of time through the rest, the rest of the winter months, we're certainly going to seek out options that are better than what we're seeing right now. And to address the myriad, um, concerns that have been brought up here, uh, as we, we strive to just do the very best we can for the people that we're trying to help here in the winter months. So I, I, I think you can trust, we'll continue to report back to you, whatever discretion you give us. But if you give us that broad discretion, we're going to be actively working with our community partners that have this expertise and, um, try and bring in, uh, the hearts and good intent of the volunteers that have been trying to work with us as well.
Mayor Finkel, I, well, I, I mean, I certainly appreciate what you can work with. Um, I think that's certainly something. And I think if you engage folks like Matthew and Renee and Megan and, and then John and, you know, the people working at the shelter now and others, um, and again, maybe there's, anything, I mean, I think we're all at the same point, point here where we want to move these things along as quickly as possible.
I, I'm comfortable with, uh, the City Manager Craig Owens, I'm comfortable with that level. I, I, I don't have Brandon on my screen. If he's nodding, then, um, I'm even more comfortable, uh, with, with that level. But we're going to continue to report back with you and, you know, we don't take any of these expenditures lightly. Uh, we, you'd also mentioned the cooperation we've had with the hotel owners and these property owners and business people that are trying to, uh, to work with us as well. So I think there's a, there's a ton of good intent and a fair amount of frustration. Uh, and we're going to move through it, uh, to try and, and do the very best we can. I think the signal of the commission to say that you are supportive of us working out, um, the details to help continue to better shelter the people that need this, um, in a, in a more responsible and safe way, uh, that's the direction we need. I think we can work with that.
Commissioner Larsen, sorry.
I was going to say, Brandon, that was that a shake of the head? Yes.
Yes, sir.
Derek?
Derek Rogers, Parks Recreation. There's a, just a couple of things in talking with the finance director, um, earlier in the week. Um, as you craft something, can we get authorization for the finance director to authorize, uh, payment in excess of funds, uh, because we went into the red tonight? And then the only other request would be because the funding for 100 people with, with damages and fines is an unknown, um, request that there's language that allows the C manager to extend or, uh, be flexible with the budget going forward, how we discussed again.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you for that. Commissioner Larson?
Commissioner Larson, I think that's, we've given the discretion, um, to the city manager at this point to work with the various partners as well as the funding aspect of it. And, and correct me if I'm wrong on that, that's, that's the impression I got. I, I would like to, to, um, make sure we don't forget what the whole goal of this program was, uh, was just for winter sheltering, to make sure that our, um, community members stay safe, um, through the winter. And, and if it, if this program wants to evolve into something more significant and something that's definitely more needed, but, um, I, we need to make sure we come back to the commission and talk about that. Because right now my goal is just to ensure that we have folks, um, sheltered overnight in a non-congrat, non-congrat setting, um, through the winter.
Mayor Finkel, I think that's a, a good point. That's the, the, the point of this is extraordinary situation of COVID and people being unhoused. How do we do that in the absolute best possible way we can? And give the flexibility to make that happen in the safest and, and best way possible, working with all our partners. Other comments or we ready for a motion to direct him in that way?
This is Commissioner Ananda, I'm just curious, do we need a motion or are we just giving direction? Our, our action tonight was to receive the report.
Mayor Finkel, I maybe, Craig can respond to that, but I do think we have to authorize the expense of some amount of money.
Brandon?
Craig, do you want me to jump in?
Uh, feel free. I, I, the City Manager Craig Owens, yes, we do need the expenditure in some of the comments that, uh, Derek carried forward about, um, approving the overage that we already expensed. Not by a lot, but I mean, there was some overage, so that's included in that. But we, I need budget authority to, you know, to, to spend these funds that have not been included in the budget the way that they're described.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you for that clarification. Comments? I could try to make a motion if, if we want. Okay, I'll try that. Um, and I guess I'd preference this to say that, you know, the, the number we had in the report was the 200,000. I, I, I think that's a number that gives us some flexibility, you know, that we can do some things with and, um, make a difference and not have to come back every week for additional authority while leaving that discretion. Obviously it's an up to 200,000. And if there was ways that, um, other programs come online or otherwise, or the, the weather gets better and we don't spend it all, fine, but, um, that's where I'm going to make my motion. So I think the motion, um, would be a move for approval of, um, $200,000 in budget authority to continue the winter shelter and, and house, um, individuals in, in the best ways possible, um, and give that direction to the city manager and staff, including the payment and the excess funds of $941 that we had from the initial $50,000 request.
Vice Mayor Shipley, second.
Mayor Finkel, I just, to be sure before I vote on that, um, Craig or Brandon, is that understandable? In motion or do I need something else in there?
This is City Manager Craig Owens. Uh, it is understandable and I'm, uh, understanding that also to believe, to mean that if there are professional services, whatever they are, whether they're social work or, um, or security or, um, those, those kinds of services, that that would be within my discretion, uh, of the allowance that's being approved.
That's certainly my intent.
This is Assistant City Manager Brendan McGuire. Um, I'm, I'm also understanding, uh, because the $200,000 was based on a projected timeline through the end of February, that that would be the expectation of the commission to continue the program through the end of February. Um, and, and we certainly could try to stretch those funds, but, um, and, and if it works out that way, we'd be happy to do that and report back to the commission. But from the motion that I'm taking, that's, that's what I'm expecting the, the, that's what I'm understanding the expectation of timeline is.
Yes, that's my expectation. I think there's flexibility in that as you walk through this, you know, process, um, to come back and report to us, um, along the way. I mean, if, if, at least that's my theory. I mean, I guess I'm not saying you can't come back to us before February 28th. Um, if, if we find a solution that, you know, that you believe you need to expand your authority, we'd ask you to come back for that, obviously. But, um, on the flip side, yes, I mean, that's kind of the theory to get to the end of February.
This is Commissioner Ananda, I don't know that I'm on board with, um, that being used discretionary for anything, including security. Particularly if, you know, they're looking at 20 to $25,000 per week and we're granting $200,000, that's not going to cover the cost of additional security as well.
You okay with other professional services, but not?
Yes, I, this Commissioner Ananda, I believe that those, um, primary prevention-based services are far more cost-effective and less traumatic for the folks experiencing those services.
Mayor Finkel, other comments on that?
Commissioner Larson, I'm fine with it.
Mayor Finkel, I, I guess I'm, I'm usually for multiple, you know, more discretion than less, but I, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Ananda. I mean, um, I guess I would rather leave it a little bit more up to the discretion. I mean, you know, maybe you can think of all sorts of scenarios, but maybe you can think of one that would be necessary, I guess, but.
This is City Manager Craig Owens. I, I, I mentioned it only because I heard that there was a constraint from some of the providers. And I just, if, if that's the only available option, uh, that is the only reason why I mentioned it in there. The preferable option, obviously, is the prevention and the resources of the social work to help, uh, provide the assistance. So we get the experience that we're, we're already seeing, uh, of, uh, you know, professionally managed, uh, type shelter.
This is Commissioner Ananda, I would, I would be more inclined to accept that, um, in order to move this conversation forward, if that is the last alternative that would be considered.
Mayor Finkel, I, I certainly hear what you're saying. I, I guess I think Craig's hearing what we're saying and, and staff is hearing what we're saying. And, uh, um, you know, I do think we need alternatives on the table and that's one of the last ones. But I think that's, I'd rather leave that alternative out there because it might take a few, you know, there might be something that happens in the short run that we might think something needs to be done. And I'd just rather leave that flexibility, leave our options on the table.
Commissioner Ananda, thank you for indulging me, we can vote now.
Mayor Finkel, do I give one more chance, say anything before we vote? There's a motion by Mayor Finkel, I, and a second by, um, Vice Mayor Shipley. Um, Mayor Finkel, I vote aye, Vice Mayor Shipley?
Aye.
Commissioner Ananda?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Passes 4-2-0. Thank you for that. Thank you for everyone who's doing the work. Thank you for all of those who are going to do more work now that we've done this. Um, Derek, Brandon, Craig, Renee, Megan, Matthew, um, Steve, all of you. Um, you know, sometimes these votes, all we do is generate a lot more work for people, but well-meaning people doing good work is something we're in the business of. So thank you and, and, uh, we look forward to seeing all that you can accomplish. That takes us to commission items. Are there any future agenda items? Commissioner Shipley?
Vice President Shipley, um, only because we talked about it earlier and of course we've talked about it before. Um, just to point out again that, um, Commissioner Ananda and certainly I have expressed concern about how sidewalks will be addressed in the future. Now, I know that we had a conversation about how, about a lot of things, but we certainly didn't decide anything. Um, we had a lot of options on the table. Um, I don't, at the cost of asking for a return to that conversation, I still feel like I hear at least one other commissioner saying, okay, well, let's leave out what the program, how many years this program takes. Do we want to take responsibility for sidewalks that are repaired in the future? And when do we start that? Which seems like the direct question we've never answered. Um, may, maybe Commissioner Ananda doesn't feel that way, maybe I'm misunderstanding her. But, um, just thought I'd ask since this is the only time we can talk to each other.
This is Commissioner Ananda, you're correct, I have asked for this conversation and I will continue to ask for this conversation. Um, I know that, you know, we, we who have been here for a while have a little bit of fatigue around the sidewalk dialogue. Um, but it is, it is a conversation that we have peripherally addressed a few times. And I know that there have been so many fires to put out, um, as far as, you know, any kind of feasibility or even just bringing it to the commission for, um, consensus around moving forward with it. So, um, that's kind of where that, where that sits at the moment, I think.
Mayor Finkel, I think, um, you know, I think there's a lot of, like I said, we've kind of bounced around the issue. I think it's worth putting on the future agenda and, and, and then not right now, but, um, kind of coming, coming together on what really we want the staff to bring back to us. Um, and maybe we could consider that next week or, you know, think of, think that through and see what we really want that agenda item to look like. You know, sidewalks, as you say, is a broad issue, but, I mean, maybe if we could, maybe if we could narrow that down a bit, and then we could talk about what that looked like.
This is Commissioner Ananda and, and Mayor, I would just clarify for me, that portion of the conversation is what happens after we've done a segment, um, or a section and taking that on as infrastructure for the city, is the specific proposal that I have made historically.
I see, so just that one part of this. Well, that's narrow enough, we could at least get on a future agenda item for staff to look at and bring back to us. Other future agenda items or work session items?
This is Sherri Redeman, City Clerk. So just so I'm clear, you're wanting, the commission wants to add that discussion to a future agenda, as a future agenda item.
Yes. Do we, do we need to vote on that? I guess I'm not sure how we do that.
No, Jen, I mean, Jen, sorry, Sherri Redeman, City Clerk. Uh, some commissions have, but generally, uh, just, um, some, uh, sorry, my words are not coming to me. Just acknowledgement from the majority of the commission that they would like to have that added.
Mayor Finkel, I think we have at least three.
Commissioner Larson, but it's just on the subject of, of the possibility of taking them over after they've been repaired? Is that my understanding of that conversation?
Yes. Mayor Finkel, I thank you for that clarification.
City Manager Craig Owens, do you have a timeframe in mind, anybody? City Manager Craig Owens, do you have a timeframe in mind, anybody?
This is Commissioner Nanda. I think that we acknowledge we have some stuff coming up. Because I wonder if, like, late spring, early summer would be?
Vice Mayor Shipley, should we think about the, well, number one, they've shown us kind of what they think the preliminary area is going to be. I feel like we should want to tell the people in the next area that, can we get it maybe in conjunction with when they show us or ask us as part of the budget? I'm sorry, am I making sense here? The next section of people, I feel like if we come up with something, they should know what the expectations will be for them in the future or what their rights will be in the future.
Mayor Finkel, I think you're, you're making sense to me. I'm not sure when that is. So I guess that's a question. And I'm not sure anyone left on the call. We lost our sidewalk people, I think, on the call. I, I think what you're saying is if we're going to send them a letter that says your, your sidewalk's about to be repaired and you have to do X, Y, and Z, it might be worth having a letter in, by the way, you know, this is an option that we'll take it over afterwards if that's what we decide. You think and you want to make sure that that's in that letter. Again, I'm not sure when that is, so.
Vice Mayor Shipley, either, but that might give them more time than just a few months since they're already working on that issue.
Commissioner Larson, so are you proposing that we actually send, when we send letters out to, to this next group of folks that we put in that letter a potential policy that we haven't passed yet?
No, I, Mayor Finkel, I think what you were saying is if that letter's not going out till July or September, then we don't have to have this on the agenda, you know, until we get a little farther down the line. If that letter's going to go out tomorrow, well, then that doesn't help us either. But maybe if we knew when that letter was going out, that might help us give some direction to Craig on timing.
Got it.
This is Commissioner Nanda. I've asked Craig to bring back some suggestions on timing, knowing that information.
City Manager Craig Owens, I, I think we've, enough of us have heard it to convey this on. We, we want to have this resolved before we would send letters out. And so sometime before that, that's good enough for me.
Okay, other work session items? Vice Mayor Finkel, or other items, commission items? Seeing none, City Managers' Report.
Thank you, City Manager Craig Owens. You see a number of regular reports on there with some interesting information. And we've gone through the financial stuff. So I, you know, sales tax reports, some of those things. We did want to report on, you know, just kind of a, an interim report on the financial audit corrective actions. And you'll see that we've got some detail in there. Just, just kind of reminding you that there are things we can fix and things that we're, the fixes further off, but we're working on it. And I think that was an important part to just kind of remind everybody about. Certainly happy to answer any questions around those, but we're really just trying to keep you and the public informed of our progress on those things with, you know, the ultimate goal of having, you know, a completely clean audit, free of any comments. But we wanted to let you know that there's some really hard work going on to continue to, to improve and address specifically what our auditors found last time. The other items, utility assistance for, on the Corona Relief Fund, we wanted to make sure we gave you that information. Other than that, we'll just stand for any questions that you may have.
Mayor Finkel, any questions? Lots of, like you said, lots of good reports in there, lots of good information. Appreciate having those and appreciate the work going on with the, the audit. And I know until we get the, the new accounting system, it's not going to be, be perfect. But we appreciate the work moving towards that. Other questions, comments? I guess that is a public agenda item, isn't it? So I would open it up to public comment on the City Managers' Report. If any person would like to speak on the City Managers' Report, please raise your hand.
Chris Flowers, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers, and I looked through the City Managers' Report and I just noticed that an upcoming meeting, it's going to be the talk about how we choose the mayor. And I was just wondering if we will also be looking at, at the possibility of other stuff like districting, because if, if, if that's going to be on the table, I, if, if talk about districting comes up, I think we should also at least discuss the possibility of combining city and county, because I've just been thinking that if, like, one of the problems I have with, well, it's not really a problem, but just like a super majority. Like if we go to districting, I think NIMBYism could be, like, it could be made worse because it's going to, like, that one district's going to have more pressure on their representative. And if we could go up to seven, seven, just like seven people, seven person board, then a super majority would be five out of seven. As, but as of now, three out of seven, or three out of five would not be a super majority. Just, it's, it's just something I'm just wondering about if, if there's going to be other discussion or if it's just strictly about how we elect the mayor or if districts will also be added. But just want to throw that out there. Thank you.
Mayor Finkel, I would say come back next week, Chris, to talk about that, but I somehow know you'll be here. So, but you're all invited, as always. We, I think we talked about several issues there. Sheri, I assume there was no other public comment?
No, Mayor.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you. Okay, calendar items, any changes or updates to the calendar? Seeing none, I think we are ready to adjourn.
Commissioner Larson moved to adjourn.
Mr. Nanda, second.
Mayor Finkel, there's a motion by Commissioner Larson, a second by Commissioner Nanda. Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Nanda?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Aye.
Mayor Finkel, aye, passes 4-2-0. Thank you all. Have a good evening. We'll see you next week.